I mailed them to every school board member. Yeah, yeah, they were definitely. You got like probably 15 or 18 of them. I stood in the post office for half an hour at the little machine going all this stuff. Yes.
It is December 8th and this is our regular school board meeting starting at 7:00 PM. We'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening and taking the time to join us and participate in our meeting. And I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So to kick off our meeting this evening, we'll start with learning a little bit about Native American Heritage Month. I'm excited to reintroduce you to Josh Bryan, Principal at Holcomb. Deanna Grundia, our Belonging Administrator, has also been supporting these events. And more importantly, we have some students and a family member here. We're looking forward to hearing what you did last month.
So we're just here to talk a little bit about the variety of activities K-12 in this district that offered activities and our events in our elementary, middle school, and high schools around Native American Heritage Month. We do have both an audiovisual video to show from Beaver Creek, but we wanted to start a little bit with some in-person responses from students at Candy Lane in the Totos Hunitas Program who will speak to a part of the activities offered in the district. I'm Josh Bryan, the Principal at Holcomb Elementary.
Hi, everybody. I'm Deanna Grundia, and I get to be the District Administrator for Belonging. And these are some wonderful community members here from Candy Lane. What's your name?
Aria.
Akira. My name's Shanae. I'm their mom. I've got a second grader and a kindergartner. I do try to volunteer as much as I can at their school. It's very great. And when I heard about the Native American, I like really wanted to be a part of it. As I'm Native myself, which I didn't really know that until I was 16, so when I heard this, I really wanted to learn more about it.
Could we go to that slide so we can showcase? Yeah. So I want to give a shout out to the Oregon City Schools Foundation who helped fund this awesome opportunity. We had a book reading and fry bread event, and we were able with some coordination with our first and second grade classrooms to have everyone come into the library. And the librarian read this awesome book, and then we went through the recipe and kids got to experience what it's like to eat some fry bread. So we're going to share a little bit more just about what that tasted like and how that felt to be a part of it.
You wanted seconds, huh?
I wanted seconds, and there wasn't even powdered sugar on it.
She wanted me to get the recipe. She thought I already made it, but quite haven't got there yet, but we do have the recipe on our fridge.
Is there anything else you want to share? Or you can keep going if you did.
Yeah, I think that's it.
If you want to move forward one more. The other event we wanted to highlight from Candy Lane Elementary was something that is done yearly by the school librarian there. She shows them a video called "The Coyote and the Sun," which is an award-winning animated video by Leo Barrio. They always do an activity afterwards with her third grade classes in which they kind of identify the primary themes of the video, which is kind of talks about the interconnectedness of human race and concepts of transformation. And then they do kind of a craft, which you can see pictures of. And full disclosure, these are pictures she had from a previous year, but it kind of gives you a sense of kind of what the students are doing to sort of tie in kind of an artistic event to the actual video itself. We also have, we had other elementary schools doing topics related to Native American history, and I think we have a video here speaking to the experience of students at Beaver Creek Elementary, and hopefully our audiovisual will come through for us.
And that's the top middle one.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hanica, and I am a music teacher here at Beaver Creek, as well as the Equity Committee Chair. On November 6th, we had a man named Alan Town come in and tell stories to our fourth and fifth graders. Alan was a very good experience for our fourth and fifth graders. He was very engaging in his stories, and each story had a lesson for the kids to learn. He also had questions for the kids to answer at the end regarding how they felt about the stories and what they learned from the story and what the moral was. Some of those stories, the kids genuinely enjoyed hearing the stories that he liked to tell, as well as seeing the graphics that he brought along with them of the stories that he had told. So I have some folks here that are going to share their experiences about that storytelling and how it impacted them.
I like the presentation because it taught us things and taught us where we live in Native American culture.
I like the presentation because I think it's special to hear about Indian culture. Also, he taught meaningful stories.
I like the presentation because it was a great opportunity to see how others lived and thought about their culture. I think it was nice to hear about a different culture because their stories are different for each culture and dimension.
I think it was meaningful to me because he just wanted to tell us the story and end the stories where there was a lesson to teach us.
I think it was meaningful to me because their culture had many interesting stories that taught us like learning about their culture and learning about their culture and their innocence.
I think it was nice to hear about their culture because we got to learn about its culture and how they lived in their different historical elements.
Thank you, Mr. Town for coming and presenting this.
I want to give a shout out to Mr. Alan Town, who has over 30 years with the Cleveland School District. He also helped craft with many tribal members across the state, the consultation toolkit with our tribal community members. And he is the parent of a former staff member, and he just loves coming back and volunteering. And he actually got to showcase a little bit more at some of our other schools, so we'll continue and see what he's at. We do have a second video. If you want to play that bottom middle one, it's really cute. I mean, how often do you see all of fourth and fifth grade doing the same? A brief capture, a snapshot of one of the stories and how it created this really awesome engagement with them, where they got to kind of mimic the sound of the animals. That was the main character in the story.
On the next slide, you can see that Mr. Town also presented at Gardner Middle School to a group of sixth graders in an assembly. That's documented in the photograph to the right in the bottom left. In the upper left hand, they anticipated hoping to have an assembly around a Native American dancer who has come in the past. They were not able to schedule it for November, but do have it on the docket for January, so that will be happening once we return from winter break. The next slide. Gardner also has kind of a reader board that has a rotating selection of biographies of historic Native American individuals that they kind of run through daily throughout that month. This is just a slideshow. And again, full disclosure, these are some slides that kind of I put on there, the ones that we initially had, the Principal Beck sent, kind of had fuzzy resolutions, so I swapped those out for these. But it gives you a sense of the diversity of the individuals who are on there, kind of rotating through, so students who are entering the building in the morning or throughout the day can see a different individual each day. We also focused on the land acknowledgement, so it looks different at elementary schools than it does at middle, but as you can see, it sort of featured on display at Gardner Middle School. And then at Holcomb, where I'm at, we did have some of our third grade classes do kind of a deep dive into the content of the land acknowledgement that is read at Holcomb, sort of the distinction around it. What does it mean? Why do we do it? Just having those conversations at grade levels that are appropriate and at a depth that's appropriate for those grade levels. Additionally, Ms. Sandhu, who's here, had a second grade classroom. In her classroom was doing a multi-day lesson about salmon and Native American tribes in the Northwest, so you can see her classroom gallery at the end of the activity, and then also the incorporation of books specific to Native American Month, Native American History Month, that she read in her classroom and/or had students read.
And our last slide speaks to our amazing partnership with Clackamas EST and the Native Consortium. So I did want to plug this awesome opportunity for any of our Native and Indigenous members within our community, whether they are, you know, fully members or part members or allies or family. You're all welcome to these awesome events. And as you can see, it really is all aligned with many of our strategic plan goals around bringing together community to really highlight cultural representation and feelings of recognition and belonging. And also very much, we are really wanting to meet the needs of all of our Native children and help prepare them for their college and career pathways. And so we have really targeted opportunities where we bring in guest speakers and have different learning opportunities for our families. And you could actually see some staff members and some students in our pictures, and some of these are offered during the week and some over the weekends. But after learning today that we have some more Native connections, we're absolutely going to keep promoting and encouraging folks to come. That might be our last one. Are there any questions? Questions from the board? Comments?
Just more of a curiosity on how we share opportunities for families to explore our local tribes and opportunities like museums, or the markets, or performances, how that information is shared.
Yeah, so anytime I am privy to any either free opportunities or funding opportunities, I will reach out to all of our administrators as well as our Equity Committee Chairs. Sometimes I'm working in partnership with counselors if it's specific to college and career academic purposes. And so we actually have a number of events coming up. We have one this week at JME, and that's going to be the Ford Dance Tribal Group. And so they're a Native dance performance that that's also going to be funded by the Oregon City Schools Foundation. So we have these amazing partnerships where we get additional funds to really elevate some opportunities. And we do this throughout all of our Native, I'm sorry, all of our Cultural Representation and Heritage Awareness Months. So I'm always trying to plug in and connect with new folks across the region. And if you know local connections, please send them my way, because I'm always happy to, yeah, partner with anyone who's willing to come and share time, or skills, or training opportunities. Last year, I can also say we had a really cool opportunity for some seniors who were potentially looking for some vocational training programs. And so we were able to do that with a Native program out of Portland. So anytime I get stuff, it goes out. And if there's any suggestions from the board on how to better elevate, you know, these opportunities, please always open. But we've kind of shared it out on, you know, Caitlin's monthly newsletter, on our Monday Notes for Admin.
You sometimes send emails directly to the affinity group as well.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. I'm constantly in communication anytime I get resources from ODE or from any of the local tribal groups like Confederated Tribes or Bran Rawn has really great resources. And so we will often share them. And ODE has expanded its K-12 tribal history, shared history content. So it's no longer starting at fourth grade. They have content as early as kinder. So we've really tried to help promote that and support teachers who are ready to grow, yeah, grow their teaching and instructional time with kids on the subject. Yeah. Great. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you so much. Absolutely. Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, you can. You've earned it.
We also have, we had other elementary schools doing topics related to Native American history, and I think we have a video here speaking to the experience of students at Beaver Creek Elementary, and hopefully our audio visual will come through for us.
And that's the top middle one.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hanica, and I am a music teacher here at Beaver Creek, as well as the Equity Committee Chair. On November 6th, we had a man named Alan Towne come in and tell stories to our 4th and 5th graders. Alan was a very good experience for our 4th and 5th graders. He was very engaging in his stories, and each story had a lesson for the kids to learn. He also had questions for the kids to answer at the end regarding how they felt about the stories, and what they learned from the story, and what the moral was from those stories. And the kids genuinely enjoyed hearing the stories that he like to tell, as well as seeing the graphics that he brought along with them of the stories that he had told. So I have some 4th graders here that are going to share their experiences about that storytelling and how it impacted them.
I like the presentation because it taught us things and taught us where we live in American society.
I like the presentation because I think it's special to hear about a Native American culture, also he taught meaningful stories.
I like the presentation because it was a great opportunity to see how others lived and thought about their culture.
I think it was nice to hear about a different culture because their stories are different for each culture and dimension.
I think it was meaningful to me because he just wanted to tell us the story and end the stories where there was a lesson education.
I think it was meaningful to me because their culture has been interesting stories that I'm just like learning about their culture and learning their job style and their innocence.
I think it was nice to hear about their culture because we got to learn about its culture and how they lived and their different historical events. Thank you, Mr. Towne, for coming and presenting this.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Alan Towne, who has over 30 years with the Seaman School District. He also helped craft with many tribal members across the state, the consultation toolkit with our tribal community members. And he is the parent of a former staff member, and he just loves coming back and volunteering. And he actually got to showcase a little bit more at some of our other schools, so we'll continue and see what he's at.
Do you have a second video?
We do have a second video. If you want to play that bottom middle one, it's really cute. I mean, how often do you see all of 4th and 5th grade doing the same? A brief capture, a snapshot of one of the stories and how it created this really awesome engagement with them, where they got to kind of mimic the sound of the animals. That was the main character in the story.
On the next slide, you can see that Mr. Towne also presented at Gardner Middle School to a group of 6th graders in an assembly. That's documented in the photograph to the right in the bottom left. In the upper left hand, they anticipated hoping to have an assembly around a Native American dancer who has come in the past. They were not able to schedule it for November, but do have it on the docket for January. So that will be happening once we return from winter break. The next slide, Gardner also has kind of a reader board that has a rotating selection of biographies of historic Native American individuals that they kind of run through daily throughout that month. This is just a slideshow. And again, full disclosure, these are some slides that kind of I put on there, the ones that we initially had, the principal back sent, kind of had a fuzzy resolution, so I swapped those out for these. But it gives you a sense of the diversity of the individuals who are on there, kind of rotating through, so students who are entering the building in the morning or throughout the day can see a different individual each day. We also focused on the land acknowledgement, so it looks different at elementary schools than it does at middle, but as you can see, it sort of featured on display at Gardner Middle School. And then at Holcomb, where I'm at, we did have some of our 3rd grade classes do kind of a deep dive into the content of the land acknowledgement that is read at Holcomb, sort of the distinction around it, what does it mean, why do we do it, just having those conversations at grade levels that are appropriate and at a depth that's appropriate for those grade Additionally, Ms. Sandu, who's here, had a 2nd grade classroom, in her classroom was doing a multi-day lesson about salmon and Native American tribes in the Northwest. So you can see her classroom gallery at the end of the activity, and then also the incorporation of books specific to Native American Month, Native American History Month, that she read in her classroom and/or had students read.
And our last slide speaks to our amazing partnership with Clackamas ESD and the Native Consortium. So I did want to plug this awesome opportunity for any of our Native and Indigenous members within our community, whether they are, you know, fully members, or part members, or allies, or family, you're all welcome to these awesome events. And as you can see, it really is all aligned with many of our strategic plan goals around bringing together community to really highlight cultural representation and feelings of recognition and belonging. And also very much, we are really wanting to meet the needs of all of our Native children and help prepare them for their college and career pathways. And so we have really targeted opportunities where we bring in guest speakers and have different learning opportunities for our families. And you could actually see some staff members and some students in our pictures, and some of these are offered during the week and some over the weekends. But after learning today that we have some more Native connections, we're absolutely going to keep promoting and encouraging folks to come. That might be our last one. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board? Comments?
Just more of a curiosity on how we share opportunities for families to explore our local tribes and opportunities like museums, or the markets, or performances, how that information is shared.
Yeah, so anytime I am privy to any either free opportunities or funding opportunities, I will reach out to all of our administrators, as well as our Equity Committee Chairs. Sometimes I'm working in partnership with counselors, if it's specific to college and career academic purposes. And so we actually have a number of events coming up. We have one this week at JME, and that's going to be the Ford Dance Tribal Group. And so they're a Native dance performance, and that's also going to be funded by the Oregon City Schools Foundation. So we have these amazing partnerships where we get additional funds to really elevate some opportunities. And we do this throughout all of our Native, I'm sorry, all of our Cultural Representation and Heritage Awareness Months. So I'm always trying to plug in and connect with new folks across the region. And if you know local connections, please send them my way, because I'm always happy to, yeah, partner with anyone who's willing to come and share time, or skills, or training opportunities. Last year, I can also say we had a really cool opportunity for some seniors who were potentially looking for some vocational training programs. And so we were able to do that with a Native program out of Portland. So anytime I get stuff, it goes out. And if there's any suggestions from the board on how to better elevate, you know, these opportunities, please always open. But we've kind of shared it out on, you know, Caitlin's monthly newsletter, on our Monday Notes for Admin.
You sometimes send emails directly to the affinity group as well.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, I'm constantly in communication. Anytime I get resources from ODE, or from any of the local tribal groups, like Confederated Tribes or Bran Rawn, has really great resources. And so we will often share them. And ODE has expanded its K-12 tribal history, shared history content. So it's no longer starting at 4th grade, they have content as early as kinder. So we've really tried to help promote that and support teachers who are ready to grow, yeah, grow their teaching and instructional time with kids on the subject. Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, you can. You've earned it.
Great. So up next, we are going to learn a little bit more about our business CTE program and DECA with Dr. Crane and Brent Leong.
And I'm just going to pass it to Mr. Leong. He's a teacher and DECA advisor, and really, I think the showcase is the kids that we're going to hear from today.
That's for sure. Is this on? On? Okay. That's for sure. So DECA officers, stand up here if you would, please. So we do have a presentation we'd like to share with you today. My name is Brent Leong. I am a career technical educator at Oregon City High School, co-advisor for the DECA program. I co-advised with Rhea Letta, who is also a career technical teacher at the high school. She's not able to be here tonight with us. I'm going to go ahead and pass the microphone over to Nick Perez, who is our chapter president, to talk about his slides, and then they'll pass it as long as they go. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Perez, and this is Skylar.
My name is Skylar Tremble. I am the Vice President of Hospitality.
My name is Aubrey Treen. I'm the VP of Career Development.
My name is David Bell. I'm the Vice President of Finance.
My name is Levi Pinkerton. I'm the Vice President of Marketing.
Yeah, so Oregon City High School offers many career technical educational classes. These classes offer experience, hands-on experience to any students interested in business. This also helps them gain soft skills and technical skills in any field that they want. This practical approach makes them both ready for the field that they enter and gives them a head start in life. To get more in-depth in the classes, Aubrey can tell us more.
So we have business communications and personal finance at Oregon City High School. Both classes cover the fundamentals of real-world skills that help develop future workplace success. So students learn professional communication skills and how to financially plan for the future. Two other classes, I will pass on, our accounting and finance with David.
In our accounting classes, students will be able to break down the complexities of finance and learn the essential language of business. In our Accounting I classes, they focus on a sole proprietorship. In Accounting II, they focus on a corporation which both tie into financial accounting. In our Accounting III classes, they focus on managerial and corporate accounting. And these students will leave with the financial literacy needed to budget, track expenses, and understand the economy. And then our students will also leave with college, advanced college credit, and will be prepared for the advanced college-level accounting courses leading to the high-demand and high-wage careers. I'll pass it down to you, Brent.
With our marketing classes, students learn to transform ideas into business strategies and successful marketing campaigns. We allow our students to gain developing, selling, promotional, distribution, and essential business skills, which help a lot in the real world once they graduate. Students learn, in our Marketing II, III, IV classes, students are able to learn hands-on with our student store, where they're able to gain real-world experience with cash handling, product inventory, and also management and ordering, and also being able to communicate with all of our vendors as well. We also, in our marketing classes, are able to gain valuable leadership skills for not only just ourselves, but also advocating for others as well. And now I'd like to pass it off to Nick.
The CTE program at Oregon City High School introduces and teaches technical concepts and skills. What DECA does is it explores related careers and refines the concepts and skills taught within the classroom. We take classroom learning and we take it to state and national level competitions, competing with our peers around, in our state and on an international level. We also prepare emerging leaders. If you would like to go. Thank you. We prepare emerging leaders by engaging students in real-world scenarios, both in competitions and by letting them host events. What this does is it challenges students to solve complex industry-related problems, building problem-solving skills that they're going to need in the real world. This allows students the opportunity to network with industry professionals and get a head start in the career, in their careers. Levi, would you like to talk about how we engage with the community?
DECA gets involved in our community and helps reinforce soft skills learned in Oregon City High School CTE programs. We have been able to, been with communicating with local businesses, to fundraise and also raise awareness for our chapter. And we've also been able to help students apply the skills that they've learned in all of our CTE classes to managing marketing campaigns, or help managing budgets with our fundraising. Students are able to use all the skills that they apply in CTE programs in DECA. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you for coming. I'm curious, how does your program work? Do you have, each year you have your competitions lined up, and you have a goal that you're trying to do?
Essentially, yes. We have a state conference and an international conference. Our state conference this year will be at the end of February, and our international conference, I believe, is in April. So essentially, we compete. Our competitions look like presentations and role plays, which is where we role-play out a real-world business situation, and we're given a prompt and have to act it out how we would in real life. So for example, if somebody were to ask you in a business your opinion on something for a plan or project, you would explain what you would think would be best for the project.
The way we compete, prepare students for business school, we compete using case studies and presentations, like Aubrey says. And we can pre-plan for presentations, but not every event can be pre-planned for and force quick problem-solving skills.
Also, one way that we apply this through marketing is through our P2P store. So me and Skylar here are doing SDE, which stands for School-Based Enterprise. So we're applying what we learn in marketing and making a manual out of it to show what we've learned and to help others learn what we've learned. So do we have any more questions?
Pamela?
How, kind of, it's a tiered question here. How many kids right now, or how many students are involved in DECA? And do you serve case as well? And the third part of that question is, and all grades? I mean, is it all high school grades?
So for the first part of your question, we have 18 students currently enrolled in our DECA program at Oregon City High School. Our number has only been getting bigger as the years have gone on, and I'm really glad to be able to stand up here with all of our vice presidents. And right now, we are only engaged at the high school level, but we plan to engage with middle school and to help teach them some of these problem-solving skills and get them involved early on.
And is case, case students?
So our DECA program is open to students who take any CTE class, that is, marketing, accounting, personal finance. Really, it's students who have classes that are related to the marketing, accounting, finance area. Students at case could come up to the high school, Oregon City High School proper, and take any of those CTE classes, and then be part of the DECA program. We do meet every Tuesday after school from 3:30 until 5:30, and we do that on Tuesday because there is a transportation bus provided home for students who might not have transportation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
Just excellent public speaking skills. That right there is something that's going to take you far. Just a little curious about, several times it's mentioned that there was connections with local businesses, or you had opportunities to do some networking. Just if anybody wants to give an example of what that's looked like in your case.
For sure. We have a lot of examples. One of our most recent examples is the farmer's market. So all of us, our entire DECA chapter, we had a stand at the farmer's market, and we talked to the people running the markets, and pretty much told them who we are, and were able to connect with businesses. And a lot of people here were able to meet people in the fields that they're interested. I know me personally was able to, you know, meet people who gave me the chance for like internships, and I think David also could expand on this. We also do events around Oregon City High, around Oregon City. One of these is DECA Week. We did this last year. And what this looks like is we connect with businesses from Panda Express to businesses downtown, and they donate a percentage of their money that they make in a night. And we do these fundraising nights for a week, and they help support our program, and they help us network and meet people in our community.
With our community, we've been able to reach out to businesses, like Nick has said, but we've been able to meet with people in our fields. Like I've been able to meet different kind of accountants, like forensic accounting, or different people to be able to get these opportunities in colleges, or be able to expand in our careers future.
In our chapter, we also provide different opportunities. So this year, we are starting different kinds of internships. So for David here, he's VP of Finance, so we have an accounting internship for his group of people who are interested in that field. And then for Levi, we have a group of people who are interested in marketing. We have an internship for that. Do you have any questions, or?
I don't, I don't have a question, but just absolutely fantastic public speaking skills. You all are going to go far. But this is for Brent. Just thank you as a, as a parent of a former DECA student. My oldest took, was in DECA, and he talks about that Atlanta trip all the time with his classmates, totally fun. But he went on to get his degree in business marketing at George Fox and is actually in the field of marketing. So thank you. I appreciate you as a parent for taking the time to do this for our kids in our community, and my son has benefited it from it. And thank you. And I'm sure you guys will go out in the world and do some great things.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Up next, of recognition and good news, we have a presentation from Dr. Cook about Clackamas Community College.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Chair Wilson, thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's not often I get to sit on this side of the dais, so it's a different, different look. Yeah. Feels pretty good. I might, I might just switch sides here at our board meetings. I appreciate this opportunity to update you a little bit on the partnership that we have with you all here at the college and with the high school, and then talk a little bit about our bond, and then I was asked to talk a little bit about this crazy thing I did over the summer, so I want to mention that as well. So if we, yeah, go ahead. So I always like to start kind of the big picture, just sort of a little bit about who we are. It surprises people to hear that we, we serve about 21,000 students a year. And many of those students, most of those students are part-time, which is why our full-time enrollment's about 5,700, which is, creates challenges of its own. But we're right about where we were. We're just a little bit, pre-pandemic, we're about 6,000 FTE, and I think we'll, we'll get back up to that this year, but we're right about where we were. We took a huge dip, like, like most of the colleges did during the pandemic. Like you, we're, you know, have quite a bit of diversity with our students, so 37% students of color, and then about 1 out of 5 students are first in their family to, to come to college, which is a big deal. This is our 60th birthday this year, so we're pretty excited about that as well. Again, not as old as Oregon City School District, but, but we're pretty happy about that piece. So we can go to the next one. So, oh, that didn't, oh, yeah, that went okay. So I, I guess it covered up a little bit of that, but dual credit in Oregon City School District is what that is. So I, I thought you might want to know, usually want to know, and we typically give out this information in January when we pulled all together, so it's a little bit early, but I asked our data folks to give me this information as of now. And so this is last year's numbers. 920 students from across the district earned 8,170 college credits from CCC. And as you know, that's just about free. Sometimes there's a $10 fee for those, but that often gets waived depending, depending on. And that's a little over $1 million that we save families in the school district. I, I think that $1 million is important, but I always want to remind people that the research is really clear that students that take even one college class and get, and get college credit during high school are more likely to graduate, more likely to go on to college, more likely to gain confidence than the rest. So it, any, anything that we can do there to, to have those opportunities, I think is really, really a good deal. Next one, please. This is just a, I pulled just a smattering. These are mostly the transfer classes that are offered. We also do, of course, do quite a bit of credit with case, and then just straight here on the campus too with our CTE programs, quite a bit of classes as well. So just a whole, a whole, a whole bunch of opportunities. One of the, of course, the benefits for Oregon City High School is just walking across the parking lot, really having access to our entire menu. You know, we, we continue to talk about ways that we can find, find additional opportunities for students that maybe, you know, aren't at the high school, or just, just want to find other, other CTE opportunities as well. So go to the next one, please. So I'll switch. Like you, we are in the midst of, and we're fortunate to, to pass our bond this past November, and ours, we're just getting started on. I think Trinity's on our oversight group. I'm not sure if anybody else here in the room is, but, oh, yeah, Heidi, thank you. Dr. Blackwell, thank you. Are on our oversight committee, looking at that. We've just broken ground on our first project. That'll be the next slide. But it was $120 million bond. We, we got a premium of another $10 million, and we sold them, so, and then, and we get an $8 million match from the state for our natural resources building. So it, we, we got a bunch of resources through this, and it was, for us, not a, not a tax increase. So the, what I want to show, I mean, the, the big one is, I'll show you in a second here, but we're, we're doing quite a bit here on the campus, a lot of upgrades to cameras and security, and roofs, and, you know, and HVAC, the, the stuff that we need to do. But there's a few exciting things. And the next one is the one that we've just started on. If you've been on our campus during the day, if you could switch to the next one. We are upgrading our athletic fields and actually adding a 2,500-seat grandstand right below the softball field. And so we've never had a, a soccer field for our soccer team to play on, and so thank you for allowing us to, you know, have our games down at, down at the stadium. But we're pretty excited now to, to put in a regulation soccer field, and then, and have a stadium which we plan to use for graduation and a lot of other, other big deals. So right now, if you drive by our baseball or softball field, they're tearing those up and putting in turf. Once, once track season's over this year, they'll rip up the, the track and, and put all that in and get the grandstand in, so we can, it'll actually be finished by a fall, this, this coming fall. So we're pretty excited about that. I was talking to our athletic director, and he's been here since, he was a student in 1989, and said, yeah, this is the first time any of this has been touched, really. And so I'm pretty, pretty excited that we're able to, able to do that. And then the, the really big project is on the next slide. This is what we're calling our Natural Resources Center of Excellence, which is kind of a mouthful. We got to come up with a better name for that, I think. But it really, this is, and this, so this is just north of the high school, on, right on Beaver Creek Road. You can see it, it's going to butt up right against Beaver Creek Road. It'll really be a showcase, it'll be, it'll be across the street from the farmer's market and where our current greenhouses are. It'll really be a showcase for the campus, and particularly our Horticulture and Wildland Fire Programs, which continue to grow. And they are now, right now, in our oldest building on campus, which was built in 1969. And so it's long overdue that they get, they get some new resources. The other really exciting part about this that we've been working on for several years is that the Oregon State University Extension Office in Clackamas County is bringing forth $15 million, and they'll, they'll have about a third of the building that they'll have. So all of their programs, so 4H and Master Gardeners and their food programs, and a number of things that they do will be, will be on campus as well. So it's been interesting co-designing this building with them and, and working through it, because we, you know, we have similar needs but different needs. And so you can't really see a lot in this picture here, but the, the building will be a showcase, as I said, it'll, we're working with a company out of Roseburg, we're going to have cross-laminated timber, we're going to have this two-story kind of climbing area for our bore culture program, where, you know, be able to see some of that work. And then all of the gardens and the landscaping and greenhouses and everything in that, that space will be, will be there as well. We will break ground on that late this spring, probably, probably by June is when we're hoping to break ground on that. It'll take, it'll take well over a year, of course, to build that building, but we're pretty excited about that. I think it'll provide just so many more opportunities for people to really see what's happening here. I know Superintendent Spencer, I've talked about, you know, horticulture opportunities and some other partnering that we can do too, once, once we have this, and some of the things that the school district's working on. So pretty exciting one as well. So we can switch to the next slide. So, so this, that didn't, that didn't turn out well either on this, but, so if you haven't heard, and I'm just, I'm still kind of embarrassed talking about this, which I shouldn't be, because I've talked about it a lot. Last summer, I, I spent just about two months running across the state, literally running across the state to each of the 17 community colleges. the state, literally running across the state to each of the 17 community colleges. I ran over a marathon a day for 52 straight days. And, and I was doing that to raise money for basic needs for students and raise awareness for, for that. And really quickly, it's because it's a much longer discussion. For many, many years, I've been here eight years now, I've been concerned about the number of our students that, you know, are, are without food, without housing, unable to pay electric bills, and just really struggling to get by. And where I finally figured I had to literally put my foot where my mouth is, is talking to people about it. They didn't really see it as a big of a deal as I did. And it was just kind of like, that's just college, you know, that you have to, have to deal with these things. And I, I didn't see it that way. And I, I really wanted to help, help raise awareness about, about these issues. So if you, and so I had two goals, really. One was, my primary goal was really to raise awareness. And the, the idea there was by going into each community across the state and talking to legislators, talking to media, you know, really kind of making some noise about it, that we could, we could get some awareness around that statewide as opposed to just, just doing something here locally. And then secondarily, I wanted to raise some money. So, you know, we have, like you, you know, we have food pantries. We have a, a basic needs funds for our students. And, and, you know, all of our community colleges do, and they needed more resources to, to help do that. So I had a goal there of raising $150,000, which is really arbitrary. I, I thought about it, you know, an old school Jog-a-thon where, you know, you ask money per lap. And I thought, well, if I can raise $100 per mile, it's $150,000. So that was, that was my goal setting out. So if you go to the next slide, this is just a, a really brief map. People always want to know the details. It, it took me, I, I started out on the Idaho border there in Treasure Valley. You can see number one there in, in Ontario. And it took me a week to get up to Pendleton. It took me eight days to get to Central Oregon and Bend. And it took me about another seven days to get down to Climate Falls. So three weeks, just, just those first four schools. Really, I did it right after graduation in June, started because I wanted to avoid the heat and the wildfires. I've avoided the wildfires. I didn't avoid the heat. It was really quite hot. And then, and then it got, you know, a lot easier kind of going up the valley and then over the coast and coming back down. So 15, the number 15 is actually where we're sitting here, is Clackamas. And I got here, I think on August 1st, if I recall, somewhere in that. Amazing journey. Really, each college set up a big kind of an event when I came in. And, you know, there's often legislators showing up, school board members, community members, students and the rest that would come. And there was, there was often press, press at each one of those events as well, which made it nice. So how did I do? If we go to the next, next one. I ended up in over, gosh, over 100 different articles statewide and nationally. I was really actually quite surprised about how much attention it got. I think I was naive in how much this really resonated with folks. I was in, an Oregonia reporter came out and ran five miles with me. I had, you know, each of the, each of the smaller communities I was in, you know, they were, they were coming out and interviewing, or it was on the news. For, for my world, The Chronicle of Higher Ed is the, is the premier newspaper for, for higher education, four-year, two-year. And they, you know, they called me. I was on the road one day and, and interviewed me as I was out there. And so it was, and OPB came back. I'm actually still doing interviews, podcasts and some of the other things here. Five months later, people are still asking me about it. So the, and then if you go to the next one. Legislatively, of course, is where I was really trying to, to get some attention. And I'll, I'll make a few comments here. I had several legislators, as I said, come out to the different areas. I had one actually come out, who's a long-term friend, come out for three days and crew for me. And then many, many of the places we were at, they came out. But, and then Ben Cannon is the governor's advisor for, for higher education. He's down there in that bottom picture with his arms up. He's much taller than I am. He has much longer legs. It was really hard to run with him. He's much faster than I was. Ran 62 miles with me and, and got all of his networks and everything to donate. And, and so that was pretty exciting. But the highlight really legislatively of this is I was out in La Grande, and Senator Wyden was out doing a town hall. And his staff had called and said, hey, can you come by and do a photo op with, with the senator? And I said, of course, I've done that, you know, done that before. And I thought, oh, that'll be great. We can post that up on our blog and, and people will be interested. Well, Senator Wyden came out and he, you know, he's kind of doing what he does and talks and, and looks at it. And he goes, he goes, are you really running 1,500 miles? And I said, yes, Senator, I'm running 1,500 miles. He goes, 1,500 miles? And I said, yes, Senator. He goes, well, what'll that take you, like 10 days? And I said, no, Senator, it's going to take me like two months. And, and I saw the light kind of go off in his, in his eyes. And, and he stopped his staff. He said, oh, I, I want to do a video of this. I want to, I want to elevate this. This is, this is really important work. And he did this really nice video that he posted, they posted on their social media and everything. And as I'm leaving, he goes, I'm going to, I'm going to take this to the Senate floor. This needs to be, people need to know. And there's actually a video, we won't, we won't watch it. But he's reading out this whole, this whole, all of the event and everything about the event on the Senate floor. It just still gives me chills when I, when I hear it. And then he sent me the proclamation. Not only that, he personally donated to it. And then he texted me twice later on in the run. It's like, where are you at? I'm like, Senator, I'm here, you know, this, this place. I'm almost done. I'm doing okay. And then Congresswoman Bynum took it to the House floor. It was, it was pretty good. I, you know, I, I won't go too much into it. I, you know, I still would like to see some action, quite frankly, federally and statewide to, to really support this. And so the work's not done. But I, but I was happy with, at least with the awareness. Governor Kotek, I ran into her about a month ago. And that was the first thing she said. She's like, I just can't believe you did that. I said, yes, Governor. So next, next one. And, and then the fundraising, the way it was set up was really kind of cool. When you went in to donate, it asked you which college you wanted to donate your funds to. You had to choose one. And the thinking was, of course, you know, the people that were in Tillamook would want to donate to Tillamook Bay. The people who were in Pendleton would want to donate to Boom Mountain and so on. So it, it was, it was really great in that way that, you know, they had a lot of local support. Some of the colleges made it a competition and with each other. The coastal ones definitely did. And, and then we had some folks that just wanted to donate to all of them. So they donate a little bit to each one. It, it actually, as of today, we're about $180,000 statewide that, that we've raised for students, which I'm, again, I'm really proud of. Here at Clackamas, we've, we've created a, an endowment, a basic needs endowment. So this, you know, will live on. We're raising other funds so that it'll grow and we're able to, to support folks that way. So crazy, crazy run. If you ever want to know the, you know, all the details, it, it, I lost five toenails. I had tons of blisters. I climbed Mount Everest twice. I figured if you, if you're somebody who counts steps, I did almost 4 million steps running that. Just, just, just really quite, quite an adventure. My wife was driving the support van and drove over 5,000 miles across the state. We live in a beautiful state and I got to see it on foot. And, and I got to raise money for students and awareness for students. So I think that's it. I think that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the college or about this crazy thing I did on my summer break. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Not necessarily a question, Dr. Cook, but just more of a statement. I just wanted to applaud your passion, that you took something, that you took so desperately, that it was so important to you. And passion creates change. And, and you stepped up and did that. And I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did what she said. And also, thank you for, I guess, being such an amazing example of how one person can make an impact. So thanks.
There are a lot of people behind this. I, I was the one doing the, the running. But there were, you know, every college had communications, marketing, presidents and, you know, and I had, we had family and friends that were out crewing and the rest. It was, it took a lot, you know. And so I, I tell people all the time, I had the easy part. I just had to go out every day and just run straight, you know, and not get lost.
They helped you with your vision, which you can't, yeah. Visionaries cannot do it by themselves.
But thank you.
Thanks for the vision.
It was my idea. I have to own that.
This is a really softball question. Where did it all begin as far as your education and your, your background?
You know, I usually lead with that. I am a proud graduate of Oregon City. You know, I, I, my, my folks still live five miles here. And, you know, I went to Holcomb, graduated from Holcomb. You know, they're still in the same house. And then I went to Ogden, now Temwata. And then I graduated from the real Oregon City High School, I like to say. And, and I tell people all the time, I, you know, the, the confidence, the, the education I got, I mean, I was first generation myself. My, my folks didn't go to college. And I feel like, I feel like the Oregon City School District set me up really well. And I, you know, I wouldn't be here without, without it. So I, I'm very appreciative. So thanks for that question.
I just want to publicly thank you for your partnership and your willingness to think out of the box as we develop new things for kids. Every time I have a conversation, we're like, hey, what about this? He's like, yeah, let's figure it out. So that is awesome and rare. And so I just appreciate you as a partner.
Thank you. Yeah, it's same. I mean, you're a great partner, great thought partner to go, hey, let's, let's try something different. Let's, let's figure that out. My, you know, my reason for, for being is to provide educational opportunities for every kid, you know, in Clackamas County. And, you know, and that, I mean, I, I wouldn't be here if I didn't have that opportunity. And so I'm always trying to figure out more ways to do that. So thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Cook. We really appreciate having you.
Thanks for the time. Yeah, okay.
Moving on to Superintendent Seppi.
Well, I will be succinct tonight and just, we have a great agenda full of amazing things. And so I'm just excited for that and thankful for that. I also just want to globally thank our community for their participation and just partnering with us, whether it's showing up for our bond presentations and giving feedback, our CUBOCs here tonight. We've also had quite a few people reach out and want to appreciate Caitlin and her work with Deanna, as well as our school, spacing on the names. What are they called? Our, the people who help us with the resources for Wyken. Thank you. Our social workers, Gloria, I didn't write it down. Our social workers, whether families are in need of food resources, information related to immigration, keeping them and their families safe, holiday resources, what have you. We are here to serve our community and network with the community resources that we have. And so we just want to continue to encourage that partnership. We've seen some great things being offered at our schools. As our families request things, we work to make sure that we can serve those needs. So I just want to continue doing that. And in this season of thankfulness and appreciation, I just want to thank you, the board, for your work. It is a volunteer job that people don't really understand. And it is probably a part-time job that has a great impact on our community. So just thank you for your service.
Thank you. We appreciate you too, Dr. Spitzer. Do we have any patron input? We do not. Okay. Board communication. We have our student rep, Ms. Pedmer.
Hi. So I'm just going to talk about what's been going on this month. So last week, we had our Cinderella's Closet, which we do before our winter formal and prom. So we basically set up a room in the school that's open before and after school and during lunches that students can come in and get formal wear free of charge to wear to the dance if they can't afford anything. And, and we've recently gotten a lot of donations. So I noticed a lot more people actually taking the dresses because some of the dresses we have are a little bit older. So having some newer dresses was really amazing. Last week and this week, we've been having a book drive. We're accepting new and used books in good condition. We did have a bin in the main entrance, but that one was like overfilling. So now we only have one in the library. So if anyone wants to drop some off at the main office or in the library, that would be much appreciated this week. And then also this week, we have our Spirit Week leading up to winter formal. Some really fun themes. So today was pajama day. Tomorrow's Grinch versus Whoville, which is like dressing green or crazy hairstyles. Wednesday is Rhyme Without a Reason. Thursday is Winter Hat Day. And then Friday is Snowden. So we're all white. So I thought they were very creative and fun. And then on Friday, we have our winter formal assembly. And on Saturday, we have our winter formal dance. And the theme this year is Frosted Fairy Tale. So I'm very excited for it.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Asha?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So December is a pretty busy time in schools, as you can hear over here. Lots going on. I know that everybody's trying to fit everything in before we go on break. And a lot of fun stuff, as well as schoolwork too. And I know that many teachers try to keep things kind of as normal as possible during this busy season for students, even though there's obviously lots of fun stuff going on. Just having that consistency is key. We also wanted to wish just happy holiday season to anybody who celebrates any of our winter holidays this year. We are also still in bargaining with the district. Our next bargaining session will be at the beginning of January after break. And we're looking forward to hopefully getting some more things resolved at that. And we're also looking forward to that same day, we have our planning day that we all get as licensed staff. And that's on January 5. And it really helps us make sure that we are ready for students when they arrive. I feel like that's such a crucial time. I know that after weeks away, my brain is not totally ready to be back. And so if I can get my brain ready, then it helps the students get their brains ready when they're back the next day. So I think that's everything I've got for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Debbie wasn't able to join us, unless you're going to read her report.
Yeah, Debbie Reedy, our OSEA president, sent us a note to read. So classified staff have worked hard this fall and are looking forward to a relaxing holiday and time with family. We will be scheduling time in each building after the first of the year to update bulletin boards and check in with classified members. We're looking forward to collaborating with Dr. Sarah Crane and the Teaching and Learning Team for the next PD Day in January. Debbie Reedy and Mary McLaughlin have completed a clean copy of the new TAID contract with highlighted changes and edits. It is being sent off to the state level for review before bringing it to our members for a Q and A time and vote. We're hoping to vote in January and then deliver it to the board for approval. We hope you all have a safe and blessed holiday.
Thank you. Fantastic. Okay. Moving right along, we're up to reports and discussion. We have a presentation from our Community Bond Oversight Committee and Mr. Hobbs.
And I'll turn that over to Greg and Lena.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. I'm Greg Soule, Chair, same as last time. Macy, it is still, our vice chair was unavailable tonight. I put it out to the membership of the committee for anybody at large who want to do attend. And Lena's here again.
I am a member at large.
So we held a meeting last Monday. The next slide, please. Transferred 1.8 million in interest income to the program reserve. Reserve balance is now around 21.5 million. After that, we had a discussion about some potential upcoming reserve, program reserve transfers. Get the next slide, please. And project updates in general. There was kind of an interesting, I didn't have a complete conversation about equality and equal distribution of the reserve funds. But I'm interested to have that discussion and how we define equal distribution. Schools have different needs, different sizes. Their initial budgets are different. And I'm kind of curious to see where that conversation goes as far as, you know, the concerns about using reserve funds in the early stages of the various projects and potentially not having enough left for the, the later stages. So I'm, I'm excited to see where that goes. And then specifically, the transfers that we discussed are Candy Lane, 3.8 million for increased scope, which was, is that the new, I forget, gym, library, cafeteria?
Combination of cafeteria and, and over initial estimates, yes. As well as Holcomb
and John McLaughlin, and then temporary facilities. Those were, you know, they were round numbers. They were initial numbers. There was a, I think, a pretty long conversation about process and how those numbers were arrived at by staff. And we decided that we need to have monthly meetings for the next three months. If we're going to be deciding on this in March, an hour and a half in March is, is just simply not enough time. So if we go to the next slide, the January 5th, it's still going to be the first Monday of every month. We're going to discuss that budgeting process and how they came to those numbers. February 2nd, hopefully discuss more of the individual projects as well, our individual projects for a final decision in March. And then, you know, monthly meetings through March, what comes after that? I don't know. We'll see. Perhaps monthly meetings. I'm not sure. But we'll, we'll call, call that play as we get there. And then question for you, as last month. And then question for you, as last month, would you like updates every month or only after decisions are made? I'm happy to do either, but I don't know that I'll have a lot to report in January, but I'm, you know, happy to.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask is, what do you think would be valuable, both in you guys being to express what you talked about and what your concerns or also excitement is? And then, you know, is that valuable? And then what do you think might be valuable to us?
I think, I'm an over-communicator. I would think monthly. I was an advocate in our meeting to move toward monthly right now while there's activity to talk about. I like having the flexibility, though, to move back to quarterly. So I don't necessarily want that to be a static decision. But while there's activity to review, discuss, you know, talk through and feel confident that we, all of the members of the CBOC, can express our opinion and agree or ask for more information, while that is the circumstance, I would presume that we communicate out monthly.
I love that. And we're happy to hold space on the agenda every month. And if for some reason you feel like you don't have much to share, we're happy to wait until the next month. But just know that we're willing to hold space every month for you to come present to us.
And it doesn't have to be anything long. It could just be a couple of minutes.
Sure, sure.
No big deal.
We really appreciate all the work you're putting into supporting the bond process. So again, over-communication is better than not enough, and we'd love to hear how the meetings are progressing and if there's anything we can be doing as a board to support you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions?
Just one clarifying question. So that would be, along with David's, has generally been giving updates. So it would be partnering in that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Information.
Yeah.
I would like to say, first of all, thank you for hosting me at your meetings, which has been great.
Alex, can you move the thing closer to your face?
Move the thing closer to my face?
Yes.
I can do that.
There you go.
I've really appreciated being able to be a part of your meetings, and I hope that that has been helpful for you guys as well. I think my question for you would be, do you feel like you're getting everything you need from us and from the district to be able to do your oversight job?
I was like, that's a good one.
Yeah, I do, although I communicate with David more than anyone else. So it's pretty easy for me to do that. We had a little bit different sort of format of presentation of the information this last time, and I think it was helpful. And there were some requests made within the meeting from other CBOC members to present it in a little bit more granular format as well, and that was wholly received. So I think that'll be, that'll be good going forward. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I think there's a little bit of confusion still about our role and cart and horse and decision-making process and where we fit into that and what other committees have already done. And if our role is perfunctory in checking a box to say that the community was included, or if we don't have enough information, what happens then? And I think that was a big piece of our communication. And so we asked for more information for it to be presented and expanded upon, and that's why we asked for more meetings. So I don't think that, I don't get a sense that anyone has concerns that the decisions that are moving forward or the way that plans have unfurled are moving in any kind of direction that generally we don't want. I think it's just about coming into the conversation with subject matter experts and making sure that we, community members, understand it.
That's great. Any other questions, comments from the board?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, one more comment. I just want to say, could you also thank the committee on the board's behalf for the work that they're doing? We really appreciate the time and energy and the honest communication, I think, asking for more when you need more. So thank you.
Great. Will do. Thank you.
And Mr. Hobbs, bond update?
Sure. Thank you and good evening once again. Greg and Lena, thank you for coming this evening. And speaking of volunteers, it's just a great testament that we continue to get such great interest in the bond program and support for the bond program from our community members that are joining this committee, that have joined our elementary design advisory groups, that came out to talk to us at some of our feedback sessions in November. There's clear interest in the bond, and we're trying to provide as much information as we can as we go forward. I think as Greg and Lena have indicated, it's a growing process with the CBOC, which is great. We're getting feedback from them and making adjustments to the information we're providing on a monthly basis, and I think it's working well. So we look forward to the discussions in January and February and going into the spring, and we'll see what their needs are and we'll work to meet those needs. Our resources continue to be our webpage. It's very important, I think, that we continue to emphasize that to the community, that the bond webpage through the district's website really is our clearinghouse for information on project updates, on budgets, on meetings, on opportunities for input. Really is a great resource, and that also continues to grow and develop as we get additional feedback about what would be useful information in the community. And we're continuing to adapt to that through Caitlin and her group on the communication side of things. So I just thought I would start with that. Update, really, we are moving quickly on a lot of different projects on our fields and grounds. I should, I realized I had an error. I love to be a perfectionist. I also like to acknowledge when I make errors. We actually installed our second scoreboard, so it still says first on this one. But our second scoreboard went in at the high school. As we got some of our rock down, we're able to drive onto the fields and get the scoreboard installed. That will happen again at our third field and eventually up at the multipurpose field around the track and the football field and multipurpose field at the high school will be the last one, and that'll be in the spring as we're going forward here. The turf continues to be installed. We've got some great pictures coming of, up in just a minute, of the progress on those. We're getting closer on Pioneer Stadium to understanding our budget and where we stand. It seems like a large process, but again, we have a complicated, complicated set of grounds there, given the unique history of this site. And we're really trying to figure out how best to deal with some of the subsurface conditions that might be able to support a building, that might support our athletes. That's really where our focus is at the moment, while still looking at how we can do some fundamental repairs to the stadium itself as we're going forward. If we get up to the next slide, please. These are a couple of shots of our fields still in construction. You can see lovely weather has rolled in, as we all are aware today especially. But we're getting rock down at the fields. This shows the installation of one of the scoreboards. If you go to the next slide, please. This is a little bit older, but does show the amount of water that's out there. One of the things that we did do early in the fall before too much of the rain came down was put cement down into the soil, which allowed us to keep working on the projects as the rain progressed. If you could go to the next slide. These are a couple of interesting pictures. That is the softball pitching mound that's being installed. They've got the rock cleared out for where that large mounded base will go in ultimately, associated with the turf. And they're also showing one of the constructions of the bullpen that is being installed at the softball field. Our next slide. With our elementary schools, as we, we had a work session back in October. We spent a lot of time in November soliciting additional input from our elementary design advisory group, from our schools and our school staff. We got a lot of productive conversation back from them on ideas that they saw were either exciting or perhaps we, things that we should think about in terms of trying to incorporate into our design. So those were great sessions. We are doing another round of cost estimating on our latest designs to make sure we're on target with where we think we are in terms of budgets. We are working on our CTE design development at the high schools, refining that design. We had good feedback sessions there as well, lots of input from teachers. And we're working on a variety of operational issues with the school that are unrelated to the bond but tied in ultimately to the bond outcomes. And we're really working on refinement of those designs as we go forward, looking again to start construction in the spring or summer, yet to be determined. Those are all things we've been soliciting feedback on from the school, and we'll be working towards here in the coming months to get finalized. Our schedule remains the same for our projects. Nothing really has changed on that. Working on turf replacement with anticipation of that being completed for start of the spring athletic seasons. Pioneer Stadium and the remainder of the OCHS fields, that is our restrooms and concessions buildings and a variety of ADA improvements out there. Water being provided to the community, all of those types of things. We'll be bidding here in the spring and looking for construction in the summer of 2026 in between our athletic seasons. It's a narrow window we have, similar to our schools, when nothing is, nothing in theory is happening associated with high school sports that we can get in and actually get the work done without disrupting them too much. Phase two, again, will be 26, 27, our three elementary schools. We're deep in planning for that, working on land use submissions for all three of the elementary schools that will go in prior to winter break. I think they're targeting December 19th for all three of the schools to go in for land use, either with the city or the county, in the case of Candy Lane. And the high school career CTE program doesn't require land use, but again, we'll be getting ready to go in for permits for that and the other schools for construction permits in February. Next slide. Again, I mentioned our recent meetings. We had a good follow-up discussion with our elementary design advisory groups, which represented all six of our elementary schools that started over the summer. We brought them all back together, as well as some members of our bond planning committee that helped with the initial structuring of the bond scope. Brought them back together to tell us kind of where we were landing with our scope, similar presentation to what you all saw at the work session. We've been out in the schools, soliciting feedback from school, from staff, from communities, community members at each of the school sites. And again, as you heard from Greg and Lena, the recent community bond oversight committee was on December the 1st. The big upcoming date for us really is February and submission of our packages to the city. We are on target and on track for all of that at this point.
Great.
Any questions for me this evening?
Questions for? None? Not even from you? Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Moving on, we have our athletics and activities update.
All right. Good evening. My name's Cody Aker. I'm the athletic director at Oregon City High School. And with me?
Tiffany Traver. I do clubs.
She does more than just clubs. She does a lot more than just clubs. Yeah, activities, exactly. Thanks for having us. We're here to give you guys some updates on some participation numbers when it comes to our fall athletics and activities, as well as kind of talk a little bit about some of the programs that are going on. We always, at the high school, kind of start with this as our mission statement, as well as with our school district mission statement of our partnerships that we have, not only with the students that are hallways, but also the communities that are around us. So it's a big lens that we have to continue to look at as we continue to progress and identify some of those needs that our students have. And it's kind of a day-to-day process as you go through the halls and what we have. So we'll get into it. So our next slide here. A really cool thing I wanted to start with would be our unified soccer program. Our numbers grew with our athlete participants, as well as our partner participants as well. A pretty neat picture there. The big one is that they were the 2025 regional champions. So it was a super wet and rainy day on a Saturday out at Wilsonville High School, and they were able to win a couple of games and bring back medals. Mark Bradley and Asa Era were our two coaches for our unified soccer program, did a phenomenal job with these young students. And many of them, you know, when you see these photos, they were smiling. Some of their action shots that just couldn't fit, lots of high fives, lots of kids really enjoying the opportunity to just be out there to play, right? And that was, that was a big thing for them. So numbers increased this year. It's a growing program, just a precursor to our winter program for basketball. We already have enough for two teams for Unified Hoops, which is, I know it's been done in the past, but our numbers are even growing where we've kind of maybe thought of the idea of adding more. So we'll see what happens with some schedules and maybe breaking some teams out to get some more opportunities. Next year's our football team. The number-wise, down just a little bit, is a smaller senior class. Those are seniors that are pictured there. Coach Aaron Skinner is our head varsity football coach. A really cool thing that you will see on every single one of our athletic slides for the fall is that every varsity team qualified and were recognized as an OSA academic all-state team. And so I think that's something that a lot of our coaches were proud of, to hang their hats on, that the students had really strong GPAs. Overall, pretty successful year record-wise, with the opportunity to play in the first round of the Columbia Cup, which is kind of the subdivision of the 6A football playoffs. Went to South Medford High School, had a tough loss, but at the same time, it was a really good experience with those young men and something that I know a lot of them are really looking forward to next year, those that are not seniors. As we move on here, our boy soccer team. Participation numbers up just a little bit. Their GPA, as you see there, is a 3.33. Some all-league selections are listed there. We had a brand-new first-year head coach, Ignacio Arcas. He is one of our teachers at the high school, a dual-language teacher who has been a fantastic addition to our staff, not only in my realm in athletics, but has been an outstanding individual for our students that are maybe less represented. They see someone that might be of their same race and ethnicity, and he is a phenomenal man when it comes to holding standards and expectations for our kids. Picture there also our six seniors. That is a pretty cool thing, that they're able to do their senior banners on kind of a small goal right as you walked into Pioneer Stadium, kind of front and center. And so it kind of gave them a highlight for their senior year. Girls' soccer team, 47 participants. I believe I'm right, they had the highest team GPA of a 3.67. They beat out our girls' volleyball program by, I think, .03. But also a new first-year head coach, Von Suzevich. He was hired to take the helm. He did a really good job of looking at the culture and care of our student athletes on the girls' soccer side. Felt like he kind of turned the corner. We only had two teams with 47 girls, and that was, we talked about it in the preseason, it was going to be a lot, it was going to be something that, there's going to be some growing pains, and this is one of those where we just didn't have a qualified third coach. We're moving forward to try to find that third coach earlier so that we can have three teams, because we're projecting to have more than just 47 kids come out next fall. So those numbers are going to continue to grow. Also, they're all-league selections listed there on their side. Next slide, please. Cross-country, 46 participants this year. The girls' team, 3.49 team GPA. They also had two representatives at the state meet. Grace there finished 21st, and, oh, sorry, Olivia finished 21st and Grace finished 40th on the, on the girl's side. And then on the boy's side, Hunter was our lone individual that qualified. He placed 46th. And talking with all three of them, they have some aspirations of earning better times in the spring, as well as for a couple when it comes to the fall of next year. They've really already started to talk about the targets and goals of what they want to accomplish. And so really good year for our cross-country program. And then the last athletic program here, but not least, would be our volleyball program. They won their fourth consecutive Three Rivers League title. Had a couple first-team, all-league selections. Like I said, their team GPA came in second. They made a really, really awesome state tournament run where we hosted a first-round game, got a big win, and then went to Forest Grove and beat them in an upset. It's the, kind of been who we've matched up to get to the final site over the last three years. And so it was really cool to go to their site and beat them, because we've done that last three years in a row, which is cool. But we also had a couple first, sorry, all-state members, Kendall Clark and Tabitha Westmeyer, both earned some all-state recognition. They're only sophomores, and so there's a couple more years of development with those two. So pretty exciting stuff. And as we move on here, the next slide kind of shows the breakdown of our different athletic programs, as well as the kind of team level, the breakdown of grade level, as well as our breakdown within our gender. End up with 291 total student athletes this fall. our breakdown within our gender. End up with 291 total student athletes this fall. And then as we kind of jump into activities here, a couple of things would be marching band, sideline cheer and drama, kind of the, the fall play. With that, numbers were great as well, as we continue to see kids being included and being a part of kind of anything they want to dip their toes into, we, we provide. So it's a really cool thing to see that number. And then the, the last piece, kind of trying to align with our strategic plan, our year three goal by the end of the year this year is to continue to improve the regular student attendance. One of those things is just family awareness, that attendance does matter. And then a big thing that we're trying to do in the athletic department is that all of my head coaches get a daily attendance report. So between 2:45 and 3 o'clock every day, I run a report for every single one of our programs and get it to our head coaches so that they know what the attendance looks like for their student athletes. And one of the things we talked about with our fall head coaches is that, as you all know, as we transitioned to semesters, that, that is a, a big change. It's, it's a marathon instead of a sprint when you look at trimesters. So a lot of kids, we're, we're trying to address the, hey, you actually got to get after it now and not wait until December, January, all of a sudden now the semester's over. And so we really tried to, to hit home that idea that academics is a huge piece, but also the attendance part of showing up and being a part of the classroom and knowing what's going on in your classroom. So those are our, our goals for that, that third year here. Turn it over to Tiffany.
This one?
Yeah, it's you, right? No, it's me. Sorry. These is, sorry, my fault. I was one ahead. So these are our, our sports that we offer throughout the course of the year, as well as some of the other activity offerings. Again, like I said earlier, an incredible number of programs that if kids want to be a part of things, there are opportunities. And I think our kids really do take advantage of those pieces because there are kids that are multi-sport athletes, but we also have kids that may do a sport, but they're also involved in an activity. And kudos to them and their time management skills to be able to identify all the different things that are going on.
Yeah, so now mine. So a big piece of the attendance, I think, is showing students that they have a place to belong and that's where clubs are a huge part of that. Last spring, when I came with Trinity and we talked about clubs and my vision for this next year, it was going to be to create this club handbook for the advisors and we have done that. So in the spring I started working on it and then finished it this fall. So the link is there, but it also goes through the topics of the overview and guidelines for clubs, the different academic responsibilities, meetings. They should be meeting at least once a month, the schedules, finances and fundraising for clubs because they aren't funded, but they can request funds or they can do their own fundraising. We just had BSU actually go to a field trip at PCC, which was really exciting. They did, they did some fundraising for that. Talks about social media and then all the different forms that they need to submit to make sure things are in place. So that handbook is really big and awesome resource for our advisors. We also split up our clubs. Before it was just, here's all of the clubs we have and it's a big bulk list. Looking at it, there's a lot of different types of clubs and so we split it into these five categories. So honors and academic association, so NHS, we have a science national honor society, a math national honor society, affinity clubs, competitive clubs, interest clubs, service clubs. That's kind of where we split. There are a few that will overlap and can be listed on a couple of the things, but it just really helps us display them and split them into the type of club that they are. Depending on the club depends on the commitment level, I think, of students. If it's an interest club, it's probably not as, not as big of a time commitment. It's a place to gather and maybe talk about whatever it is that you're interested in, whereas academic and honors, even the competitive clubs, service clubs, those require a little bit more outside of the monthly meetings. So this breaks down our clubs into the categories and then in the parentheses next to it has the number of members current. There's a few that haven't started yet. So our ski and snowboard club, they don't usually get going until January or February. They were hoping for snow this last weekend, maybe still hoping for snow, just a lot of rain. But yeah, so there's a breakdown of our members and how many are in each club. We're just hoping that it continues to grow. We saw a lot of growth last year from beginning to end. So I'm hoping in the spring I'll have even increased numbers here and maybe even more clubs. That's all we have.
Yeah, that's it.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I'll go.
Yeah.
All right. Just on your slides, like just, I'll just throw out the football slide. I know there's the 110 participants, but we also have individuals that are also part of the family that aren't actual athletes, but they're, they're our managers, our hydration specialists. I'd love to see a little bit of that data on these coming forward because I know a couple of those individuals, even as a youth coach, I had some of, some of those kids helping out, setting up drills and stuff. And I think sports offers for all the kids a, a place and even if they can't like physically play, there's some pretty cool, we have some pretty cool individuals.
Some amazing managers, yeah.
Their time to, to be part of that family and also our hydration specialists. I love the attendance part that you're, you're getting after it. I've heard some, some moans and groans of some of the, but I'll also love to see that data compared to the general population. I don't know if you say that, but, but because some past ADs would, would say that the, the, the clubs and the sporting programs kind of carry the, the school with attendance because they, there's consequences for not playing and then also their GPAs. So I think it's, I love the GPA stuff on there. And I, I know I kept my kids really busy and they had to manage their homework and everything. It just, it went on to college and stuff and being, finding that connection and stuff at high school is also what they, I think, got them through some of their college stuff, having that connection. But just some of those data points. And I know our soccer team had the young man that was their manager. So I think there's some pretty cool opportunities for kids that maybe not be physically able to play, but that's, that's some great stuff we do in our community.
I'm thinking that, that you did a participation of, actually, it's just the, the one that lists what the sports are and activities. I'm guessing that the activities, looking at them, those are OSSA-sponsored activities. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, and some of them are not. When you look at equestrian and you look at bowling and you look at lacrosse and you look at snowboarding, those are, are considered sports, but they're not OSAA certified or, or sponsored.
And I was speaking specifically of the activities this time, but yeah, sorry. So is that right, that group of, yes, thank you. Are all of those OSSA-sponsored?
Cheer and dance and then...
DECA is, right?
DECA's not on OSSA.
Oh, DECA's not, but, but you have your own.
Speech and debate is also.
So part of it is what Tiffany and I are kind of delineating is identifying kind of the competitive side of things.
Yes, that's what I meant.
And that's where the, the breakdown of those five categories for her. DECA is one of those groups that is going to have that competition side, as long as speech and debate. And so that's why it kind of falls under.
And the same with JROTC, they have competition.
Yeah.
Is choir OS?
Yeah.
It is. Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you for this presentation. I've got kind of a question from left field because I'm thinking about fall sports and what I used to play. So I know we had a lot of kids come out to swim last year. Has there been any discussion of adding a water polo team? Now there are six teams in the Three Rivers League that have water polo teams and they've got a full schedule going.
That hasn't been dropped to my attention yet. Yeah.
I think he's dropping. Consider it dropped. I think we're going to ask the same question. So go ahead.
You had mentioned an increase in, in students participating in the future. Right now it's pretty flat or some of the sports have gone down. What are some plans on how to get more students interested or access to the different sports and activities?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we want to see more is more of that dual participation. I think we, or, or even students that may play three sports. I'm looking at more of the athletic lens, that in conversations with head coaches is that within their programs, they need to promote multi-sport athletes. And so in doing so, that then hopefully will bring along others that may not because they have somebody that they are tied to. When you look at some of the different student groups, you have a handful of students that may be a student athlete and have a friend group that just aren't a part of a student athlete group. And so you got to have those connections and by having kids being a part of different programs, hopefully you have kids that will latch on and will grow those numbers. Another thing that we're trying to work on is that as head coaches, trying to get down into and connecting with youth programs. I know there are certain athletic programs that head coaches are fully involved with those youth programs and there's others that have yet to make that connection. As we all know, when it comes to youth sports, that's where the roots are and that's how you build. And so we got to promote that connection between our youth sports and our high school sports to grow over the coming years. And the, you know, the initial target of the next couple of years kind of lands in our school building, but over the next three, four, five school years, that's where you got to get down to those youth programs and make kids be super excited about being a part of it. Hopefully you guys saw some of the media coverage with some of our fall teams that went to some of our elementary schools in their, in their jerseys and welcomed kids and welcomed families. I think that was huge in promoting and putting our kids on the map. And so, you know, the goal is those little kids see the big kids in their uniform, like I want to be that person. I want to be a part of that program. So it's continued to, to cultivate those pieces.
Sorry. When you say three sports, I'm assuming you mean spring or fall, winter, spring?
Yes.
Thank you.
I love hearing that. As a, I'm a parent of an elementary age and I notice youth sports getting really, I feel like a lot more competitive earlier on and it's hard to be a multi-sport or multi-activity kid. And so encouraging that along the way, just to have multiple interests, I think, is fantastic because kids grow and their interests change and offering them those opportunities is fantastic. Can you speak a little to accessibility? We know these activities come with fees and I know we've talked about that as a board, but for anyone listening in, what opportunities the district provides to make sure kids are included?
Yeah, when we look at those fees, obviously it's, it's a barrier for, for some families. And so we have to be cognizant of that and be aware of those pieces. I mean, we have the opportunity to scholarship student athletes if, if they have those needs. The hard part is that there are families that are a little too proud sometimes to ask for help and that's a really hard thing to, to get beyond. And I have a couple winter student athletes that have come to me and said, hey, I need some help. And so we do have that opportunity and it's just one of those things that we kind of have to make sure people are aware of that, but also kind of lend the, the olive branch to, to make sure that they can come to us and, and have those tough conversations. They're not easy, but it's one of those things that I feel like at the high school, our administrative staff and those that are around have a pretty good sense of kids that are in need and hopefully broaching that subject with them to, to have that.
That's fantastic.
One thing that has changed with CEP is that we don't have a list of students who are all on free and reduced lunch. And so that actually makes it a little bit harder and families do have to self-identify. So it, it's something that we're, we're saying, come on, come talk to us, you know, privately, but that can be hard.
And our, do our coaches receive some training on like how to support students if they were to come to them?
Great question. You know, it's one of those things that it's, like we talked about, it's a tough conversation. I know part of our communication when, when student athletes register is that, hey, you know, you got to have the registration done, your physical done, yada, 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 right? That is something that we're trying to develop to, to make sure that, that high school coaches, as we all know, you know, all the adults that are in our kids' lives that are centered around a school are great support individuals. And it's just another layer that, that these coaches can have to be able to have those conversations, but no formal training on, on how to have those conversations.
I have one more question about, about the clubs where it says the robotics club has 24 members. Is the robotics club at the high school affiliated with Skynet and the robotics team at Case?
Yeah, so that robotics team is housed at Case and Oregon City High, yeah, Oregon City High School students are welcome to go. So we have two right now that are from the high school that go. The other, what's their 24 on there? So the other 22 were from Case. Yeah. Yeah. And their season hasn't started yet. I think she said in January, February is when they start. So now it's not necessarily open to everyone unless they were already attending because that's when they get into their competitive time.
Great.
Yeah.
I have one more. The OSAA redistricting thing is just about to be said. I think the vote's on the 15th. We're going to stay in the Three Rivers League, but there was a recommendation, I think, I don't know if it's Article 20 or whatever, about the transfers and competition. I don't know if you, is that going to be implemented or is that, 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 that policy going to be, or did that die with this? Because I, I kind of saw the redistricting, but I didn't understand how the competition part of that would be addressed.
Yeah, you're right about it kind of dying right now, is that I don't think there is much, as much energy as there was behind it when it, it came to the redistricting and, and classification part. Yeah, we're going to stay in the Three Rivers based on the last recommendation, but there's been no real conversation with ADs about what is the policy or rule changes that are going to happen when it comes to transfers. You look at Washington and California, they've already instituted some of those transfer policies and rules and some of the consequences that go when, when you transfer. One thing that the OSA has done that has kind of brought in a little bit more transparency is that when you have a student athlete that's a, a transfer to your school, there's now an online form instead of a physical paper form. And so the online form is now within a database that then the executive board and other individuals have access to. And so there's maybe a little bit more teeth, but doesn't quite meet kind of what we were talking about of some of those other basically data points of like, hey, there should be a, a sitting out time if, if you do transfer. And so that part hasn't really been solidified and communicated to us as ADs.
Thank you. And last one, adding sports, girls flag football, the, it, and boys volleyball, but girls flag football is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Are we going to add it this spring? Are we going to come back? Because, because we're also talking about at the youth level, being able to sport it by bringing it onboard in our youth programs. And that was a big push at our last, at our last youth meeting for the, the league that encompasses all of the metro area about all of the schools and the excitement about adding that in the youth programs to support our high schools.
Yeah, so boys volleyball was added and adopted as a sanctioned sport. So they'll have their first spring champion. It's, it's a spring sports season. So their sports, first sport championships will be the spring. Girls flag football will probably be adopted and be a sanctioned sport fall of next year. So it'll be an October meeting where that will be basically approved. It's in year two of an emerging sport. And so from there, one of the things that I will need to do is that I need to send out a yearly survey to our student athletes. OSA has a survey that, that we can send out that basically allows kids to select sports that they're a part of or sports that they have interest in or sports that they wish we would offer. That's one of those things that flag football is identified on that. One of the nice things is that we do have several of our football coaches that are on staff and a couple of them already come to me saying, hey, there's a handful of girls that are interested. And so that's one of the things that we'll probably be talking about here in the coming couple of months as to what we can do to provide that opportunity.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Perfect.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have a strategic, our strategic plan update. Dr. Spitzer and Dr. Green.
And I don't have to remember social workers, so I won't flub it up. Strategic plan report, this is our December report. We report out to the board three times. This is your three of our strategic plan of our four-year strategic plan. So next year we will be in the development stage of the next iteration of the four-year plan. But this strategic plan year is very exciting to us. We really feel like the flywheel is moving. We were stalled in the little areas such as career and college and we're just realizing it was a very big flywheel. So now that it's rolling, it's, we're seeing some great things. So this is our December 25 strategic plan report towards our 2027 objectives. We have set aside time for March report and then we usually set some goals for the next year and then we tie up the year in the summer. So we're going to kick off with goal one around instructional excellence and I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Green.
Let's talk about instruction. That sounds fun. All right. I want to remind you that we instituted this color coding system last year. So yellow means it's in progress, green means it's already met. And if there's no indicator, it means that either we haven't started it yet or we don't have the data yet because it's not available. All right? So we're going to start by actually talking about goals one and three on the next slide. And just reminding you that our instructional focus is reading, math, language supports and scaffolds. We have been doing professional development for staff in those same areas and we've been trying to be really consistent with all staff to make sure that we can really say that all staff have gotten certain PDs so that, so that they have what they need to be awesomely successful. Okay, we're going to go to the next one. This is an example This is an example of what we provide for all staff. And by we, I mean teaching and learning and student services. And we provide a monthly newsletter that goes to all staff. We have done for elementary collaborative classroom training, which is community, caring schools community. We've been using Google Vids to try to create some consistent videos that are very short, but that we know every principal can show at a staff meeting. We also, of course, have our restraint and seclusion training, CPI. And we've been doing at the elementary level with classified and licensed UFLI training, which is reading, which you'll hear more about from Candace later. So that's just some, those are things we've been doing for everyone. All right. We know, remember that every, every time we're thinking about PD, we're thinking about the difference that it makes for teachers. And when teachers are great instructors, we know that is the main thing that impacts student achievement. And by teachers, I mean teachers and IAs. All that, all that work, if we can get them really well-trained, they can do great work. Okay, so this next slide is exciting because it really represents committee work. So teachers who've come together in the spring and in the summer and created work on all three of these things. The, it's, yeah, so, sorry. We've got universal design for learning on the left and scaffolds and supports. We've got language supports on the right top and then multi-tiered systems of support. So those are just some trainings and some visuals and some really landing pages that teachers have created. Next one, now I want to talk a little bit about specifically some training that we've done. One is for classified professional development. We, on October 20th, we had a variety that they chose from, and it was every single classified staff member in the district. And they all went to OCHS and had a whole bunch of options and attended that training. Then, of course, on those, we take feedback. We're going to talk a lot about that later though as well. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, thanks. So November 24th, we then took that feedback that they gave us. And one of the things they said is we'd really like to have level-alike training. So rather than I choose my own adventure and might end up with a mixed group of people, this is like all elementary IAs or all middle school special ed assistants. And so that's what we did. So we had them stay put and we, as presenters, went around to their different spaces. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Then, of course, we've been doing licensed professional development as well. We know that we had ILT on, earlier in the fall, we focused on the five dimensions of teaching and learning. Again, really focused on the feedback that we got last year from the ILT participants and kind of changed up how we did that day. So that was great. And then October 20th, the math committee put together this landing page on the far right and did math training as well as building SIP training. We all came together. That was fun. And then on November 24th, we had building PD, but also some data dig information for staff that they could do. And again, we're going to talk about all that a little bit more. January 15th, we're looking up, we're looking forward to ILT, and January 29th will be a PD day. Goal two for instructional excellence is really focused on class design. Remember that we have a union partnership. Our union did just a ton of work on this class design over the course of several years. And we're in year two of the five Ds, and so we have a total of 24 indicators that we're going over. We do, I wanted to make sure that you all know some of the ways we hold principals accountable for the five dimensions of teaching and learning. So to wait all year and then get to a summit of evaluation in which you have all these indicators is really not going to be very helpful, right? Certainly not helpful to a teacher or staff member who needs feedback, right? So part of the class design work and the work that we have in our professional handbook is that professional evaluation handbook is that principals have to get into classrooms 10 times. Every single classroom or, you know, if you're a speech-language pathologist, you might have an office, but same, right? We need to do an observation 10 times. And that, those have to provide feedback as well. So we're coming up to December 15th when we have the first four need to be done. And we also do those with principals when we meet with them monthly. We go to different schools. Coming up, we're going to Gardner, and we do some PD with the principals. And then we go out and we observe, and we come back and we talked about what we saw and how we would give really quality feedback. And so that the teachers can take what, the feedback that was given. It's hard to know when you're teaching sort of all the things you're doing. And so it's important to have outside people come, right? And then we get really excited too when our teachers are starting to do walkthroughs. Of course, they did a lot last year. And we're seeing, we have 45 teachers right now who have already done walkthroughs of each other, right? And that's not evaluative in any way, but it's just a learning opportunity.
For career and college readiness, we also have three goals in this area and just want to jump into the one that is already green. We had a goal of having at least 40% of our high school students completing a CTE, AP, or college credit course. And we are already at 74%. Super exciting. We think that this could be attributed to the increase of CTE opportunities. We've had quite a few more in the last couple of years. The schedule change does allow for more kids to take more classes. So they have eight classes instead of five each trimester, which allows for opportunities to explore new CTE courses or AP or a college credit class. And the opportunity to attend multiple campuses. We have lots of kids from the high school attending Case. We have Case students going to Ochsla, kids going to CCC. And just that ability to move across our community has been helpful as well. With all of these areas, we do kind of a deep dive. One of our sub-goals on goal one is to make sure that we are ensuring that all of our students have access. And so we look at the data from each of the categories by race and by gender and by grade level, just to make sure that all, each and every kid has the same opportunity. So this is just an example. We're excited to see this, just looking at our CTE program. It's a nearly one-to-one match for our high school demographics, so that's great. We do have a few more, I think, males participating. So that's an area that we need to continue to reach out to our students. But overall, this is great data for us to see. For supporting our students in post-secondary success, first of all, all of our principals work together now because we have the same schedule. And they meet regularly with Sarah to kind of talk about how things are going, looking at scheduling, looking at opportunity. We have that new credit for the career and college credit. And there's some bumps with Naviance. We're kind of figuring that out and figuring out how to make sure that we get quality products as well as high quantity products. So we're tracking that and the team's working on the positives and things that need to be adjusted related to that credit. We've increased our grad coaches and the systems for tracking our students and reaching out to them if they become disconnected or start to slide in their grades. And like Cody said earlier, you know, it's a longer game. So we have the opportunity to support them if they bobble a little bit. We also have the opportunity to continue to encourage them as they find success. We are working on streamlining the registration and forecasting. We've heard a lot from our student advisory group about forecasting. They even volunteered to go down to middle school and kind of help out with that. They know that there's real opportunities and they want to make sure that all students know about them. So that's something that the team is working on. We have a meeting with our counselors and with the leadership. We've already got a schedule for planning and when we're going to get that out in front of kids and families so that we can get those schedules done earlier. And college and career staffing, Angie is kind of a game changer for us. You've already met her once, but she's one of our career and college TOSs and has just done a great job networking. Thank you to Director White for going with her to the chamber meetings on Wednesday and kind of introducing her. But she's been able to work on our bully pre-apprenticeship programs and new opportunities for kids to get out into the community. And it's still early in the year, so excited about that. Goal two is related to experiences for students for career and college. We actually intentionally put that kind of on our January ILT. That bank is already out there. Teachers worked on it last year through ILT, and we just hit the ground running with math and reading in the fall and figured that we'd circle back on that one mid-year to see how it's going and then continue to grow that bank of opportunities for kids.
Okay, robust systems of belonging and wellbeing. You can go, yeah, there we go. So we've got a lot of good work happening, and let's, let's talk about it a little bit. For leveraging community partnerships, we've asked administrators to attend events as well. So kind of like we did with the bond, you know, what, where can you go to get at your community and really meet and talk to your community? We've had some really good results from that in terms of just conversations and community, neighborhood associations and things like that. Then on the next slide, goal one is really, is partly about behavior supports. And so we wanted to really outline that we had, we did have the team choose, the think tank now called Design Team chose caring school community, and we rolled out the training for that in October as well. And then super flex is a tier-two intervention for students who are struggling with the, they have all the lessons from caring school community as those roll out and the castle competencies and all those things and everything that teachers do that really support social emotional learning. But sometimes they still struggle. And so we got every elementary school super flex as well. Wayfinder is something we were piloting at the middle schools with a workbook this year, and that includes Case. Previously, it had not included Case. We have an attendance campaign. You've probably seen it or heard about it. Are you here for it? Yeah, there you go. Okay. Here for it, here for you. And Caitlin and Deanna and others have just worked really, really hard on a super creative campaign that I know I would have never thought of. And so it's exciting to see that roll out and how we make tweaks and what works for teachers and what doesn't, and how we can just make sure it's a user-friendly thing. And really, our focus is making sure that parents know that we care about them and we care about the kid, and it's not a punitive thing. We're not mad at you for not being here. We care about you and we miss you, and how can we help you get here, right? That's really, really the focus and what research tells us will actually make an impact. I wrote Dale, but it's really me. We made that decision earlier. Engage communities, sorry about that. So, all right, so we have some training. I guess the one thing I wanted to tell you is the one that doesn't have a bullet. If you can back up one, sorry. We've been looking into the audit for streamlining communications, but we have not landed on what we want to do for that. And so it would be some sort of inventory, but we would likely have to pay money for someone to do it. So we've been trying to figure out how can we do it without having to pay someone money, to be frank, right? And still get the information we need. Okay, so now we can go to this. These are some things that we've been implementing to help our communities feel engaged. Map testing, you've heard about that, of course, but there's a family report specific that we asked teachers to print and have available at conferences. And then parent square, we've been trying to just do more trainings. And so, for example, at OCHS during conferences, we had people sitting at tables, English and Spanish and Russian, and just, do you need help with parent square? And it sounds like they even had some teachers that came and learned some things from, on a break. So that's great. And then, of course, we have the elementary report cards and the middle school report cards and just making sure that we have, we're printing things and giving them to people. And then if they were unable to come to conferences, we did mail things so that they still got the information and can follow up with any questions they have. Next one is just super cool pictures of kids doing fun things. Dozer days, trades career days, trades exploration class, teen mentoring program, academic mentoring program, just lots of fun things that are going on and getting our students out there experiencing real-world jobs and, and things that they do for, for their future.
All right. Next set of goals here, safe and engaging learning environments. Looking at goal one, want to call some attention to our website, ocd62.org. The goal is really centered on making sure that the variety of folks in our world, that's parents, students, staff, know and understand their roles in emergency situations. How can we be helpful and communicate and do the things we need to do? So just a quick screenshot there. There is a ton of information that was already always living there, but you can find it if you go to ocd62.org, hit the hamburger, that's the three lines, and under the apartment there, safe and secure schools. You can click and learn a lot about what we do in safety and security. In particular, the goal that we have met already was these emergency plans for each of our schools. You can click right there. Comprehensive school safety plans, they're up there. They're unique to each school. They give information to families. That's how we're going to approach safety in those schools should something happen. So we're feeling good about getting that goal complete. The other thing we're working through, here's a picture of it. Two things, I guess. Each school is going to complete two scenario-based safety exercises. Gina and our staff has created basically 20-minute lessons that principals can deliver. It's a train-the-trainer model, but they can deliver them to staff around scenarios, emergency scenarios, so that we're trained up for them. And then the second goal there is our reunification drills. The goal is to do two. We've already done one. This was over at Ochsla. They did their training on October 20th. It was a PD day. So they went through basically, start to finish what they would do in a reunification. We don't give in the public all the information about reunifications. That's part of how we keep folks safe. But we do have a plan, and we're practicing that plan. So if we ever get into that situation, we're ready to rock. We have two more planned. Beaver Creek's going to do a training in January, and Case is going to do one in May. So we're actually going to overachieve and do three this year. The last goal there, before I jump onto the next one, you can find information on parent reunification. It doesn't say locations, but we're going to be putting some information about that on our, our website, and there's probably somewhere there, actually. Goal number two is around our facility rentals and making sure folks know how they can get into our buildings after school hours and use them for new sports, of course, my favorite thing, but of all kinds of different activities. If you, also on our website, we've now pulled that out. You can click on facility rentals and get into our online portal where you can reserve space. We are probably about 25% through an audit on our pricing. So as we move forward with onboarding three shiny new turf fields, we're kind of looking at how our neighbors approach that, getting our arms around bringing those spaces into the fold so folks can get on them, probably starting in the fall, maybe a little bit this summer. We'll see how we, how we go. We want to learn our own way around them a little bit first. But super excited to deliver those products to the community and be ready to get kids on there this fall for our fall seasons. But, so you, I will be bringing that to the board probably in a couple of months, basically a new fee schedule and kind of talk through, center around those new spaces, but also all of our spaces. So you can find that right now on ocd62.org if you want to rent one of our spaces.
And that is a very high-level overview of where we're at on our very big goals this year. What questions you have? Go ahead, Ryan.
A couple. Dr. Spitzer, do you want to start with the 74% CTE, AP, college? Amazing number. Where did we start with? If you said it, I missed it, I'm sorry. Do you know?
No, the problem is I don't have that right at my fingertips.
Totally, don't worry about it.
We, we had a similar question, and I think I asked the wrong question of the person that pulls the data. And so we'll get it for you. But today, when I pulled it up, I was like, there it is. And it, I didn't.
I just want to make sure you all get the kudos for that because that's a really killer number. So really nice job.
Isn't it amazing? So exciting.
Do you do anything like post-grad to, because now that we've gone a few years, we'll have students that were in the program and now have potentially in their career field or actually at college to get feedback on what part of our program were we knocking out of the park and where could we improve to help them succeed and whatever is next?
We know we have a questionnaire that Melissa's department does for post-school outcomes, and that's a call, a literal call a year after kids are done. We don't have that at a larger scale, and I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that we could figure out how to do. I, I know that with that one, it can be hard to find kids, which seems weird.
No, totally.
But you almost have to get their phone number before they leave so that you can actually call them or email them or whatever and, and really get them to give you some good information, where you're at, what you're doing, what was, what were barriers, what were helps.
We also do receive information from colleges that will say you had students that came here and completed and received their degree or transferred. Like, we have that in the system because they reference where they went to high school. So we have that. But in terms of like CTE, if they decided to become entrepreneur and own their own welding company, we wouldn't have that. Yeah. But I like the idea of it. I don't know how to get it, but I like the idea of it. Other questions from the board?
Fire away.
Sorry, another one. You mentioned attendance and the details were going to be shared at report cards and other assessment timeframes. What are the specific timeframes that we'll be sharing that info with our families?
Say more, for, about their personal attendance?
Yeah.
We actually do that in an ongoing way for attendance. We're, at, at OCHS, for example, if you missed two days in a row, you get a phone call
if you miss two days in a row, you get a phone call if it's unexcused and we don't know why you were there, right? And so then we have official letters we have to send twice a year. They are, Caitlin did a really nice job of massaging them a little this year, making them a little bit nicer, but there are a number of legal pieces that have to be in there. So we often, we send the letter and then we get phone calls with angry people because that's excused or unexcused. And so you get the letter no matter what, if your kid's been gone a certain number of, whatever the percentage is at that time. So attendance is ongoing. The family report and the report card were shared at conferences.
Pamela, were you raising your hand? Oh, okay. Dr. Blackwell?
I think Dr. Switzer answered, but the HECP abbreviation?
Higher Education and Career Planning.
That's, so that's that credit?
That's the .5 credit. Yep, exactly. And if you remember, every year they get .167 of the credit. And so that piece is, we actually had a pretty long conversation about it today because we really do want kids to do these activities. They're valuable activities. But there is the, like, did you do it because it had to be done? Or did you do it and really think about it? And, right? And then how does that blend into the four plus two planning, which is also something that's going on right now with the high schoolers? So, and you're forecasting, right? And all those things. And I don't think we've found the magic yet of how that all blends together, but we're talking about it and we're trying and we're saying this is working, this isn't, you know. When we email the students and tell them, we're going to work on a parent info sheet just to help as well. Thank you. We appreciate it. Up next, our Early Literacy Grant. Come on.
Good evening. Hey. Yes, I need five volunteers. All you have to do is read one sentence. There's no pressure. I promise I'm going to give you the answers. And you don't need to do anything with them right now. Okay. Good evening. My name is Candace Hinkin and I get to be the K-12 Literacy Specialist. And tonight I get to share with you one of the strategies that I get to oversee. And this is the phenomenal work that our licensed and classified staff are doing around high-dose tutoring and it's funded by the Early Literacy Grant. So the Early Literacy Grant covers a couple of different things that it allows us to do. It's focused on K3 and can be used for curriculum, at-home reading, extended learning, professional development, and high-dose tutoring. This year, we purchased quite, we've invested quite a bit of funds into UFLY and Taller de Foneticas, which is kind of the equivalent for our dual-language immersion program. We also have done a ton of professional development, particularly around foundational literacy skills and best practices and how to teach foundational literacy skills. And tonight, we're going to have a little mini reading lesson. You're going to have so much fun. This summer, we did Books in the Park and I talked to you about all kinds of stuff that we did this summer, but part of that was funded through the Early Literacy Grant. And just kind of a ton of work, including the curriculum map that's happened at K2, which has really helped to align instructional practices across K2 and make it really clear, what are we teaching, what are we focusing on, so teachers can think about how that then interacts with their students. Next slide. Okay, now we get to play the game with your cards. So, in a second, I'm going to ask you to read number one and we're going to determine if it's a myth or a fact. Now you don't have to call out if it's a myth or a fact. I will just tell you the answer, okay? All right, number one.
Reading is natural.
Reading is natural.
No.
Myth. It is a myth. So unlike speaking, which you will just develop by listening and being a little human being with the ability to hear, your speaking skills will increase and grow. Reading is not that way. We can't put you in a room with a bunch of books and you just learn to read. That doesn't happen. Thank you. Number two.
Have you been learning to read in your childhood?
Yes. Yeah. So this one's a little tricky because we do learn to read differently, but our brains actually develop the same skills in the same way. So the brain development of reading is actually very consistent regardless of the amount of repetitions or practices or strategies that really help engage you.
So it's a fact?
It's a fact. Number three.
There's semantics.
There's semantics, yes. Some students acquire this pathway much more easily than others. Yep. Fact. Some students do. Some students only need a couple of repetitions and they learn the skills quickly and other students need a significant amount more, anywhere from four to 60. And that makes a huge difference. And I think we're on number four.
So that's explicit and systematic instruction is more effective for all children.
Fact. So I think maybe explicit and systematic have gotten a bad rap as boring and they are not boring in the hands of highly qualified teachers. But it is the most critical thing that all students need. Some students will learn without it, but all students will benefit from it. And I think we're on number five.
Prevention is easier and less expensive than intervention.
Truth. And that's really why I think the Early Literacy Grant has come to be because we know if students are reading by the third grade, then their outcomes are significantly different. So we need to intervene very early with instruction. All right, you guys did a great job of playing the game. Thank you for playing along with me. The next one. So this slide here is just, I want to show you just a visual representation of reading. Because if you think of reading as maybe natural and easy to acquire, this kind of helps highlight the complexity of it, that all of these strands of reading come together to help create a skilled reader. And so we've been spending a ton of time helping teachers, both our licensed and our classified staff, understand the complexity of reading and then how to intervene. And part of what we did last year is we piloted UFLY and that is a foundational literacy curriculum that's meant for K2. And we saw some really incredible outcomes. So this year, we have gone full in. All K2 teachers are using that whole-group instruction. This aligns with what they're doing in high-dose tutoring and I'll get to the specifics of that in a little bit more. While I've talked a lot about foundational literacy, it also would be remiss if I didn't say that good, quality reading instruction includes comprehension and vocabulary and content knowledge and all of those things are happening in our classrooms, too. Next slide. All right, so this is the exciting part where we're going to do a little reading lesson. And you are going to be my students, if you don't mind, and play along with me, okay? All right, let's go to the next one. All right, so, oh, well, it didn't quite work, but that's all right. Okay, the boxes are in a weird spot. In a second, we're going to read these three pages. The first page has a lion. The second page has a clown. Everybody, who's on the second page?
Wow.
Excellent. And the last page has an elephant. What's on the last page?
A dog.
Great. Okay, so the first page, it says, "I see the lion." Hey, you're going to read it with me. Ready, go. "I see the lion." All right, now we're going to read the next page. "I see the clown." Okay, let's get ready. "I see the elephant." Oh, you guys did amazing. You did so good. Look at, you didn't even have to look at the words on the page. Maybe you were looking at my forehead. What the heck. Okay, this is how I learned to teach reading early on was with these kind of readers. The hope was that with readers like this, that students would see themselves as competent readers, even though they weren't reading, that they would become, have a love for reading. It may or may not have done that. And that memorization was going to help them become readers. The unintended consequence is that students learned that the picture was most important and repeating sentences was most important. They didn't learn the sound correspondence or the phonetics behind how all of that was happening. So let's fast forward to all the learning that our teachers have been doing and what reading looks like now. And your lesson's over, so you may take a breath. This is what, some elements of what it looks like right now. I love the very first picture. That is a kindergartner doing her progress monitoring on UFLY and she's writing a sentence with spaces in between her words and has sound correspondence just from hearing the teacher, you know, say what she wants her to write. Kindergarten, yeah. And amazing, all of the kindergartners in the class were doing this assessment at the very same time. So cool. The very first column is first grade and that's approximately what first grade is teaching right now. They're teaching the PH, can be at the beginning of the word, at the end of the word, and they teach how their mouth looks and moves when you're saying the sound. The second column is what our kindergartners are learning about right now and they're learning the "uh" and "uh" can come at the middle of the word or at the beginning of a word. And they learn that explicitly. The last picture there is a picture of a decodable text and then applying those skills to a text and what that might look like. Not a boring text. It's fun and engaging. Next one. Oh, so I was going to tell you in the last one, some really fun stories. One kindergarten teacher this year said, "Candace, I want to show you my data. I want you to see what the kids are doing." And this year, right now, she has more kids knowing more sounds than what we ended last year with. It's incredible. The second one is a teacher came to me and she said, "I really was worried about this student who has articulation struggles and I wasn't really sure what to do. I asked the SLP. I said, 'What do I do?' And she said, 'You're already doing it.' It's through the instruction of how does your mouth look and what does that sound make?" And that student's acquisition of sounds has been phenomenal with that clear, consistent instruction, both from their SLP to their classroom teacher. So really cool to see. This image right here is highlighting some of the work that our high-dose tutors are doing and the concept behind what they're doing. So when students are not meeting our grade level expectations and foundational skills, they don't need different, they need more practice. They need more repetition, more ability to do that. In high-dose tutoring, that's what they're getting. So they're getting more practice of the same concepts they're learning in their classroom, but a smaller group at a higher frequency. So I can make sure that little Candace is participating and giving practice every single time, which she may not be doing in the whole group. So that's a benefit of it. The next part you see kind of in the other corner is a graphic of how many times the letter "I" is practiced. And this is an example of in UFLY, a student practicing the "i" sound. And in the very first lesson, they practiced 41 times, if we're following the lesson. The next lesson, they practiced 59 times. And so they practice over and across multiple lessons. So we're not waiting for them to show proficiency over "i." We are continuing to practice and practice along the way, which the research shows is much more impactful. That first reading lesson that we did together is leveled literacy. And what I'm showing you now is a systematic phonics program. And when you look at the research between the two, early on, leveled literacy students actually show a little bit more growth faster, but they plateau. They don't carry those skills over. And so we don't see proficient readers at third grade. Our students who receive systematic phonics instruction, they're a little bit slower on the uptake because they have to learn a lot of things to apply it into text. But then they grow at a much more quicker rate because they're able to apply those skills across different text scenarios. It makes sense when you think about it. And so this program helps us do that and our high-dose tutors help reinforce that. Next one. So high-dose tutoring, what that is, is it's small groups. It's groups of one to three students in a group. Can't be more than three. It's for K3 students as it's funded through the Early Literacy Grant. And it has to be at least three times a week, which doesn't make a lot of sense in five-day weeks. So we just do five days a week for students. And it's by trained tutors. So we train our instructional assistants to work with students. One of the things I think is important about this is that these are instructional assistants. They are not our classroom teachers. So our instructional assistants are working with kids that are almost to grade level. They're not our students that are significantly behind, but they're almost there because they're instructional assistants and they've had this training and we give them a curriculum. But our certified teachers who have had a lot of training and experience, they're working with our students that need the most amount of support. And it's data-driven. So we're looking and seeing how are kids doing? Now, I'll tell you a caveat to this is that we are giving more kids time in the intervention than we may have in years past. And one, it's because this program isn't really built on a, like, one-week proficiency cycle. It's built on a much longer term. And so, for instance, last year, we had this little first grader who joined a group late and the interventionist at the time said, "I'm not sure that this kiddo is in the right group, but they're in my group and I need to do, I've been told." So I'm going to, I'm going to do. After about three weeks, that kiddo was keeping up and doing really well with the group because of the amount of repetition and practice they were getting. So we do wait a little bit longer as we're looking at the data to decide how we increase practice and repetition for students as opposed to change them out of a group. All right, the next one I'm excited about. We have 139 students being served across our schools. Thirteen students have exited because they met grade-level oral reading fluency standards. And in addition, we have 53 students served by Reading Results. So we are in coordination with an organization called Reading Results and they provide high-dose tutoring. And so they're serving 53 and then outside of that, we have 139. It's about 26 hours of tutoring happening each day. The data that I've seen so far, it's a little bit tricky because first graders don't have an oral reading fluency benchmark in the fall. It happens in the winter. But so far, we're seeing on average about 10 correct words per minute growth, ranging all the way up to 36 correct words per minute that students have grown, just thus far. There's definitely more data to come, so we'll get to watch and see how that goes over time. It is really exciting, which means you can ask me any questions that you might have now.
Questions from the board?
Well, I love this. This is exactly what I believe in and I've seen in 20 years of teaching work. So thank you for making that happen. A little bit of clarification, when are the students getting this high dose and where is that happening?
That's a great question. Primarily, they're getting it during their win time, which is the what I need time. And so they're not missing any core instruction during that time. That would not serve us well. We need to increase practice and repetition. So most of them are getting it during that time. And that can be in their classroom, in a community space, in a different room. It really varies by school and students and all of those things.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And this is fantastic. And just, I know we've talked about this as a board, but where does the Early Literacy Grant funding come from?
Yes. It is a non-competitive state grant that is from the state. And we apply for it, but we get it as long as we apply.
And do we get, is it consistently? Can we, you talked a lot about the fact that we need to, the repetition, kids need to stay in this program. Are we confident that the funding will continue for future years?
Well, I'd love to say we're confident about any funding continuing, but I think we all know that that's nothing I can guarantee.
It's also like you're setting up, Eric and I, for the next presentation. So.
Fantastic. Okay.
Yeah. I do think that one of the things that this grant provided us beyond the ability to really focus is, I don't know that we would have considered high-dose tutoring before because we want to serve so many kids. And this has really allowed us to look at that strategy and implement it and see what's happening. And I've even had a teacher say, "So I have an instructional assistant. On the schedule, it doesn't say they are doing high-dose tutoring, but could they do high-dose tutoring?" Yes, they can do that. That's a great strategy. Yeah.
Fantastic. Oh, go ahead.
On the 13 students exited, that's from the beginning of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Yep. Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Blackwell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, honey.
Sorry.
I forgot it. I mean, I didn't ask the first time, but just two seconds on Reading Results, as far as who those tutors are and what program.
That's a great question. So Reading Results is a nonprofit organization. So Reading Results is a nonprofit organization, and they get some funding outside of us, which means that they are actually able to serve up to fifth grade. And so we do serve a couple, we serve some students that are not K3. The tutors are hired in the community. So right now, we have two schools that have Reading Results, and it's Gaffney Lane and Redlin. And so at the beginning of the year, they put out a recruitment. And some of them are parents that have students there that the schedule works for, and some are people that are in the community or close by that are passionate. Some of the tutors actually share between the two schools, but the majority of them don't. And they are also using components of UFly, and so, and they were last year. And now that we are using it as our, as a part of our core foundation, we're having a much more robust, I guess, conversation around the instructional practices between the two that I think is more significant for our students. The other thing I didn't mention is that we are a part of the Demonstration Network. And so we have two schools, Holcombe and Beaver Creek, that are part of the Demonstration Network for the state. I think there's about 13 districts that are involved. And part of that has been this network of learning around early literacy and has really helped us build a partnership with our other neighbors and have some really specific professional development, too.
Okay, for reals this time, thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on to integrated grants.
Thank you. I'm here with Eric Leon, who's our grants coordinator. And he gets to partner with teaching and learning and with fiscal. And so we have a really nice partnership and way that we can sort of cross those lines, and he speaks both languages. You know what I mean? So it's, it's been really, really helpful and exciting. As we get started here on this, I just want to remind you that before I turned over to Eric, right now, what we're going to talk about is two things. The SIA grant agreement, because that's required by the state. However, it felt really weird to say, here's a grant agreement. Yay, we thought maybe you'd want an update on the integrated grants overall. So that's what we did. So we're going to do both of those things. Remember, the integrated grants are SIA, High School Success, Early Literacy, and Early Intervention Systems. Just a reminder that the integrated grants are the more funds. So our state school funds, we look at as our core funds, and that's how we do our day-to-day business. Whereas, our hope is that those integrated grants are for above and beyond or more support for students. All right, we're going to talk about the SIA grant agreement, so make sure and do that.
Next, Eric, please. Okay, so a couple of things to highlight in the grant agreement is that this agreement is for a biennium, meaning two years. Funds are released every fiscal year. So this grant agreement shows the funds that will be dispersed over the next two years. Of course, in the agreement, it does stipulate that it is dependent upon state availability of funds. It also notes the performance window, which is the performance window for the full biennium, meaning two years. That's July 1st of this year to June 30th of 2027. A key, important note here is that funds can carry over between a biennium, but they cannot carry over across bienniums, meaning that after the two years are up, you cannot carry over any unspent funds into the next biennium. The state has moved to moving SIA, High School Success, and Early Literacy from a reimbursement model to a dispersment, meaning that we do not necessarily have to have the expenditures to ask, to seek reimbursement. Every quarter, you're allowed to submit for reimbursement, or dispersment of 25% of those funds. And they must be fully extensed by the end of the performance period. And any unspent funds will need to be returned to ODE at the end of the biennium. For SIA in particular, that allocation amount of $6.9 million includes the charter schools, ACA, Spring Water, and Case. So that's something to keep note of when we're talking about the full allocation. And then the grants are restricted funding, as my colleague Candace alluded to. Funds can only be spent in a certain, particular way. For SIA, they can only be spent on increasing instructional time, addressing students' health and safety needs, reducing class sizes, and expanding availability of student participation in well-rounded learning experiences.
Awesome. So this next slide is, is like, just, we pulled out a portion of the budget that goes to the state. We're switching now to the full, all the integrated grants, sorry, I meant to say that. So that was SIA, yay, good job. Now, we're going to talk about the rest of them as well, just so that we can make sure that you have an update on those. So the way that these work and the way the budget works is that it's basically a series of theories of action. So you say, what outcomes do you want? And you'll notice our outcomes match our strategic plan very well. And then you say, okay, in order to get that outcome, what do I want to put my money toward that I think will get that outcome? And then that's how you're measured. Like, did you put money into graduation coaches and then graduation rates increased? If not, bad theory of action, and you do something different the next time, right? Or whatever things might have happened. Okay. Where, you have in your pocket the entire full budget that we turn into the state. This is just a snapshot. And Eric is, can explain any of this, and then just a quick reminder that again, these are supposed to be more funds and not core funds. So, and you can see everything, how it's aligned to an outcome.
Yeah, so I wanted to, again, mention a few key items for the budget. Every budget line item has to be tied to an outcome and strategy. Some positions are split-funded, which thus means that grant funds are braided, and thus, one grant affects another. And so if you have a reduction in funding in one grant, it could affect another. So going line by line. Strategy one for... Do you guys have any questions on the budget?
Do you want me to wait?
No, thank you, sorry. We had a little conference, we're good.
No, it's just more, but we, we get the, the funding. The funding's not based on us meeting these goals. It's not restricted in that way.
Correct.
Okay.
But we do, we have to, I mean, you heard us talk several times last year about integrated grants, right? And then as we reapplied, we have to say every quarter how we're doing, and if we're making progress toward those goals. And if we're not, what changes we think we should make. And particularly, as we go into next year, are there changes that we need to make? And then for the full biennium, it's a whole nother, like, let's figure out what we did and did it work, and what should we change and what should we keep.
I just want to add, part of the accountability bill that starts in '26-'27 school year is about making sure that you get outcomes. So one of the things that is challenging is that sometimes we are creating theories of action. You know, Candace is like, let's do tutoring. Like, that's not something we've done before, but we're hoping, and we're trying something, and we have to tweak it. But if the school district continues to not show growth, then there are different things that will happen under the accountability bill in terms of the state intervening. They can come and do directed goal-setting. They can direct the funding and what it's used for. So if over time, after a few years, it looks like the district is not making good decisions that produce outcomes, then the state will come and say, no, you can't do this or that, you need to do this. So there's a lot of changes on the horizon.
Of course, our hope is that we have figured it out, right? But something like the Demonstration Network that Candace was speaking about, you know, we're asking people all the time, what are you doing with your High School Success money? What are you doing with, you know, so that we can make sure, and we're paying attention to what other people are doing that, that's working, so that we can say, does that, would that work for our system? Is that something that we would want to make a theory of action around? I brought Eric because I really thought you might have questions about the actual budget, and I didn't, I wanted to bring the expert.
I mean, we were having a little sidebar here, just, just commenting on the fact that the term braiding sounded complicated.
What does that mean?
Means you're using two funding sources to fund, in this example, one position, where there are rules in grants, so you can braid funds, but you can't also supplement and supplant. So some of the grants will allow you to use two funding streams to pay for a single thing. But you have to be careful in the way that you do that because if you do two different funding sources, that, that one of them doesn't allow that, or has that supplement supplant rule, then you get into some trouble and into some issues. So braiding is the term that you use when you use two different funding sources to, in an allowable sense, to fund something.
And just to further add on to that, so because there are more funds, we can't use more funds to pay for core activities. That's called supplanting. And so those are just things we have to really attend to, which is why we have a full-time person that just helps us with the coding and the monitoring. And we just had this teacher move, and now this teacher's being funded under the grant, and okay, that's changing this. It's super complex, and Eric does a stellar job at helping us keep all of those more funds afloat and, and spending them out, right? Because we don't want to give any money back to the state that we can use directly to support our kids. And so the tracking is pivotal.
And those, you know, we've talked about this before, but integrated grants sort of means they're all on one sheet. It doesn't actually mean they all have the same rules or that they all have the same requirements. I mean, it's, it's really interesting. And that's part of what Eric knows, like, the back of his hand. You know, he, he just, he'll say, for this, what do you think about this? And then inevitably, he'll go, what's the outcome? What outcome are you tying it to, Sarah? Like, oh, uh, B, you know. So we have a lot of fun with that because it is, it is complex and complicated. And these reports of the state also, as much as I appreciate the money, because I do, there, we had an error last week in a report that I know you had spent hours and hours and hours on along with Jennifer, and it was literally not working because we didn't tab in. Right, so it's like, not, they told us, which is great. I mean, they knew the problem and why it wasn't working, but just like, things like that, that, you know, just take time, lots and lots of time.
And as a follow-up, and we may not have this data right off the tip of our fingers, but hearing how complex it can be to administer grant-funded programs, do you see that our programs that we fund through integrated grants, is there more overhead administrative costs to support them than our standard programming?
They each have an allowable amount, which is not the same. Sure. Right, and so that, Eric actually is the one that really dug into that last year and figured that out. I don't, I've never mathed it out. That's not a word, is it? Mathed? I, I think that it is cumbersome, and I don't know how you would do it without a grants coordinator. I just don't.
We're very grateful.
Because all, all the, for one thing, all the budget stuff, he just knows because that's his background. Also, it would just take so much time that when you think about other things that need to be done, I don't know how you'd do it without, without Eric.
And I would just add that, I'm sorry.
I would like to add on to that, that each individual grant does have an individual overhead cost, which is caused, it's called the indirect rate. When it is not explicitly stated in the grant agreement, we do have a certified rate through the state that we tend to use if that is an allowable use on the grant.
Are there some where it's not an allowable use and we have to use general fund?
Yes, but typically, your, your indirect kind of just flows into the general funds, and it kind of meshes together, I guess.
More braiding, got it.
Yeah.
I would just add, one of the things in the accountability bill is to streamline our reporting structure. It's one of the components that's in that bill. We have, as an organization, have to submit over 250 reports annually for different things, whether it's our attendance report, our teacher levels of education report, grant report. I mean, we have just reports going all the time. So they are trying to harness them into fewer reports. They are piloting that across our state right now, and I think they're trying to get it to be about half. We'll see. But Heather Futch, who does a lot of our reporting, she's key to that. Jennifer Bell does a lot of our reporting, and then, you know, Eric, as well as our fiscal team, our HR team. There's a lot of reports.
And I think you can't just know the numbers, and you can't just know the education, which is why it's beautiful that Eric helps on both sides because he knows the numbers, and you are learning a ton about instruction, whether you want to or not. Yeah, so we're, you know, we, we have to understand what is happening with the money, and then he has to tell us if it'll work or not, and it's a really good partnership.
Agreed.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you. Dr. Queen, are you moving back to your seat?
I am because my notes are over there.
Okay, got it.
While she's moving.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you so much, Eric. Data and feedback, conferences, and professional development.
Let's talk about data and feedback. Okay. So obviously, we're going to talk about professional development, but we did a little bit of that before, some feedback that we get, and then conferences, meaning parent, student, teacher conferences. So just so you know, next slide. We, after every single professional development that we do, we ask for feedback, and then we review it. We review it as a standing item on our teaching and learning agenda, and we also send it to any applicable people, principals, or whatever. We do have some grants that require us to do a pre-assessment and a post-assessment to see if our PD was effective, right? And so some examples of that are McCrenn Behavior Grant, as well as our House Bill 3499. If we're going to do work that's professional development-related, we have to say, here's what teachers knew beforehand, here's what they knew after. And then a month later, here's how they're using it or not using it. So I'm just going to review some of the things that we've done and some of the feedback that we've gotten. The first one is the Educators Empowered Conference, the first annual in August that we had. We'll have it again next year, and we, what you see here is the overarching themes of the answers to this first question, based on your learning today. What will you do to improve the student experience in our school district? And then we also are always looking at our areas for improvement. And this one was a fairly simple one that we should have thought of, but sometimes you have to see it in feedback to do that. And, and this was just adding things to our internal site and making sure that all sessions, even if it's a session you didn't go to, are able to be accessed. October 20th, we had two simultaneous events going on. One was classified PD that I talked about before at OCHS, and then another was professional development with licensed staff at Elementary, where we all went to Gaffney Lane, and we did a professional development with some math, some map, and some building time. And so again, we, for this one specifically classified, we asked what worked well and what we could do for improvement. The reason I highlighted this particular area for improvement is because it's exactly what we did the next time, based on what they were saying, that they wanted to have time together. And so that's just an example of how we really do take these into account. The next one is the October 20th day from licensed, again, elementary licensed. And so we, the day was basically, or the morning was basically split into with your grade level time and then with your building time. And so we asked for feedback on both of those times. Then we coded it. So basically, if it was green, it was something that was good, we should keep doing that. If it was yellow, it was something that we need to consider for the future in terms of format, et cetera. And this is a, I used this one again because this is a specific thing that we pulled out and did for November 24th. And then purple, which, I don't know if it looks purple there, but these were ideas that we should be kind of percolating on and thinking about for future PD. I do want to let you know that we had, this was the day that there was no internet, and that was fun. Yeah, I called David Klusman and said, when I'll be back on. And he laughed. I was like, that is not, but that was a day, the whole world, you know, we were all out. Anyway, so that could be part of the reason that we did not get very many responses from our licensed staff for Elementary. And part of the reason, I just really wanted to say, like, we really, really use the, the feedback, and we love to have it. And we usually have time at trainings where you can, you know, scan a QR code or go to the link and do it right then. In this case, because of the internet in particular, we also sent out the survey via email so that people could do it. Okay. Next one was classified sessions on November 24th. This was for kindergarten through eighth grade, IAs, and SPAS. So not every single classified staff member in the whole district, but rather those that are working directly with students in schools as instructional support. And again, we have our most important takeaways and our area for improvement that is already getting us very excited about our January 29th time that we will have with classified staff as well. And that is just that variety or next level. We are planning Friday with, as Melissa read, with Debbie and Tanya, and really taking all that feedback into account. into account and seeing what sessions we should be offering. Our classified staff is also really, they're, they're good at getting us feedback. And it's something that we, again, I just can't say enough how much we value that and how much like, you know, I'm a person who usually, if it's really amazing, I throw it out. And if it's really horrible, I throw it out because I'm like, I'm not, you know, really amazing is like, you just had a really good coffee day. Really horrible is like, you had a really bad coffee day. But like, the trends are what we're looking for, right? So really, the more surveys we have, the better we can find the trends. And if we have people who are unhappy, we can talk to them too, you know, and, and see what, how we could talk, do better next time. So elementary session in November, as you know, before conferences, the calendar set aside four hours for PD on November 24th for elementary staff. Based on the feedback we received from our union partners, we changed that to one hour of building PD focused on their school improvement plans and one hour of professional learning team time. The way that we use the data from the one before, though, is that during those PLT times, we made sure to have some district-wide options for our ELD teachers, for our special ed teachers, for some specific teachers who maybe the, the PL, they didn't have their own full robust PLT at their building, but if you got enough people in the district, they did. And so that was a really productive time. I got to sit with the ELD teachers. They did great work on that day, looking at students who are dual identified in special education and English learning. So coming up, we have ILT teams on January 15th, excited to talk about five Ds and career in college. We have another professional development day for classified and licensed on January 29th. We'll be doing some literacy half-days like Candace did in the spring with K2. She's going to do the same thing with three-five, work on a little bit different focus, but based on what people need. We'll continue to fund, we use Title II to fund our professional learning teams if they want to do a half-day. And so we will continue that. And then we'll also continue, of course, CPI, which is our restraint and seclusion trainings that we just do year-round. And we just are really, really focused on math, literacy, behavior, language supports, right? We're, we're trying to be a broken record so that we know like math literacy, math literacy, math literacy. Yeah. Okay. So we're going to pivot and talk about conferences, parent-teacher conferences that were on November 24th. We have consistently good turnouts for conferences and this year was no different. The only thing is you'll notice some dips and we really believe that's predominantly, predominantly our Latinx families who have shared discomfort leaving their homes at this time. So I also want to point out that Gardner and Tamwata, I needed to do a better job of telling people what I was asking for because they did individual clicks for individual people, which is super cool, but doesn't exactly, that would mean Gardner had more than the students they have. So their percentage came out just a little high. So that's just on me for not sending a consistent message to the principals, but it still is exciting that they had 1,300 people come to their school. And you notice that the high school numbers are lower. However, talk to the principals and that's actually a good turnout for high school conferences. They felt, in fact, Greg said, I think that's higher than last year. So that felt good. If we go to the next slide, we, we did share a district survey through the principals. I want to say, if you are at home or at this table and you did not fill out your survey, that's okay. It's still open. You can still do it because we really do care about what people say. So we had 149 responses to English that represented 10 schools. And we had 13 responses in Spanish representing three schools. And we did also have a Russian option, but no one so far has completed that. So one of the things that we were interested in on the feedback was whether or not parents were learning about the academic levels of their students, because we heard that specifically in accreditation, if you remember. We heard that, like, we don't, I, I don't know where my kid is academically. And so that's important to us and why we're doing printing report cards and have the MAP family report and all of that. The next slide shows you a couple things. The, the first one, again, I, I think that I should have asked a better question because I said, as a result of the conference, I know how to connect. And the, the naysayers in this one are really like, well, I already knew, or I didn't need that, or I didn't talk to the teacher about that. So that, I think I should have just left out the, somebody knows what that's called, that little phrase, left it out. And then the time options was also important because we want to make sure everybody had time to attend the conference. And the most concerns there actually came from secondary, not, not because of, well, they had less time particularly at the high schools because they only had evenings, but it wasn't elementary-focused. If you go to the next slide, that first picture, I liked it so much that I put it in again. So you can just see exactly, I was, you know, like, what did I do? But yes, it's the same one. So you just cross that one out. But the format question is a good one, I think. And again, where we saw that people didn't like the format was the arena-style secondary. And so that'll be something we'll be working with our principals on and determining if that's the best strategy. I, I tend to, in my career, I've seen schools kind of go back and forth and, you know, I don't think there's a perfect way at, at high school to see eight teachers, you know. Okay. And then the, this next slide is just the overall summary themes of the qualitative feedback that families gave us. Really loved seeing that the, a positive was specific progress focus in reading and math, because that feels really consistent with what we've been saying and saying and saying. So that was great. And then a thing on areas of improvement that was, was, probably shouldn't have been surprising, but a little bit surprising, but super fixable, is that we actually have our curriculum on our website. And so people said, I wish you had, I wish I could see curriculum more than just at conferences. You can, but that obviously means we have to get the message out, right? So we'll be working on that. Do, 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 that's it. Any questions? Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand the response inconsistent communication about academics in class, meaning from teacher to teacher?
Okay, tell me which one real quick.
Areas for improvement.
Areas for improvement, bullet two. Okay, I actually have all the, these were like the bullets and I have more details. So this one was interesting, actually goes with the other one. It says, curriculum information is shared in parts and pieces through inconsistent emails. So I think what they want is to see all of the curriculum in one spot, which they can do, but they don't know it. So that's where we have to work. And that aligns with, somebody said, you know, I wish I could see the curriculum and not have to be there. So they can.
But how does that specifically connect to conferences?
It was made available at the conferences.
Yes, good question. Good, yeah, good point. So.
Right, but that's still the inconsistent communication about academics in class. They combined the concept then of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That, that just threw me when I read it, sorry.
No, I don't think you're wrong. And remember, these are themes. So what that means is it came up more than once, though, too. So that's important and it's good for us to know and figure out. And anytime you ask for just, what went well, what could be better, you know, people might be combining some things that are in their head at that time.
Yeah, okay.
It's a good, it's a good point.
I know that at our conferences, Pamela, they really made a point of communicating to families that the curriculum was available here. And so it might just be that it was like top of mind at that point.
Yeah, it could be. As I say, because it just didn't make any sense.
I see that it's not direct.
Inconsistent in what way?
It was communicated at multiple stops along the way that, do you want to learn more about this, you know? Any other questions?
Can you remind me when you say licensed and then classified, who falls underneath that?
Absolutely. So some people call licensed certified, it's a teacher, a licensed teacher through TSPC, but also a licensed school psychologist, a licensed speech and language pep out, right? Anyone who has a license to do the thing and, and it's required to have a license to do the thing that they're doing, the job. Classified is anyone who doesn't have that. So our instructional assistants, our special ed assistants. In terms of like October 20th, we're talking, everyone was there. Our bus drivers were there, our maintenance crews were there. Yeah. Yep. Secretaries were there. Yep, absolutely. Yep. Yeah. And technically, administrators don't count in that last licensed bucket, but of course, we are also licensed, but we're counted as administrators. Good question.
And then just noticing, you know, Beaver Creek having 99%, like amazing.
Right.
Attendance, I just, I'm just curious to see if that is equivalent to what their attendance is, if they as an elementary school or.
No.
Or there was something special often that.
I mean, I just can tell you, because I know we don't have anyone with 99%. Yeah, no, I, I think, we'll have a conversation with the principals just about like what worked and what didn't, and how'd you get the word out and, you know, but I think they, they just have a history of having really good family attendance, to be honest, and support, as, as do, I mean, these are really good numbers at elementary. And, and the dips make sense. And we did also allow for online, you know, if a family wanted to call in or have an online appointment, that was okay, too. Doesn't work for arena-style, right? But, yeah.
All right, thank you. And you're up again.
Last one.
Course proposals.
How we doing on time before the internet goes out? Okay, high school course proposals. I got till 10, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a lot. Did you notice in your packet? Mm-hmm. Let me tell you a couple of reasons why. So if we go to the overview, by focusing on our career pathways, which is three classes, a complete pathway is three courses in the same area. If you finish three classes, like accounting one, accounting two, accounting three, that could be a pathway and you're considered a CTE completer. We've done a ton of work this year, really figuring out, where do we have full pathways? Where do we have students doing the full pathway? And where do we have barriers to that? And the pathway can count CCC classes. It could be a class at OXLA, a class at Case, and then a class at CCC. But you have to be able to take all three so that you can get the full CTE completer status, which frankly, gives us more money as well, because we get extra money from Perkins when we have completers. So part of the thing is that we've been working on that. Okay? And part of the thing is we've had some classes like manufacturing, where you can take it multiple times, but we're not outlining manufacturing one, manufacturing two, advanced manufacturing. So we are now doing that so that we have that pathway and also so kids know, right? And that, it has led to several of these changes. The other thing is semester change impacted some course codes. So that's kind of wonky, but it's fine. And then we do have some new courses that we're trying to offer, either through a pathway or just a new course. And so I just want to remind you that as you go through these, you're going to have 30-day review, you're going to vote on them in January. If they are approved, we'll put them on forecasting. That doesn't necessarily mean it will be a go until and unless we know if we have enough kids to take it and then staff to teach it. So just remember that as you do this. It's not a guarantee, but we can't even talk about putting them on forecasting. Well, we talk about it. But we cannot put them on the forecasting sheet or offer it unless the board has approved it. And including that whole neat sheet you get for every single one of them. So that's why this is an important night. Okay. So the CTE courses that you see, again, manufacturing, we have some specificity in the video production, which is a pathway, but we've got some just more clear class offerings. And then, how cool is this one, Advanced Agricultural Science? So we have, you know, we started with like Survey of Agriculture. Well, now we have Survey of Agriculture. It's time to, like, what are the kids going to take next year, right? So we've got to keep that going. We also have Computer Science with some classes that will be added to that. And then we are going to start a Biomedical Sciences pathway, or we want to start that at OCHS. And so these are the courses that would be a part of that pathway. That's exciting. Then we have some additional courses that are just courses that we're excited about, that teachers have said, I'd like to offer this course. And students have said it's a course they want to take. So Leadership One, which is for ninth and 10th graders. And it's sort of the, you do this and then you go to StuCo 11th and 12th grade, right? AP Spanish Literature and Culture, I guess you can read the rest. But basically, we will continue to talk to teachers, we'll continue to talk to students and figure out what we can, we're kind of always wondering, you know, what classes could we offer that would be great? And, and what we need to do in order to do that so that they're available for forecasting. So again, I know that was really short, but now you have the 30-day review, you can reach out if you have questions. And of course, I can take questions now, too.
I don't have questions, but I have a comment. And that's, I got so excited when I saw that list. I thought, just in the vision that Dale had when she came to the district, and when I think back, this is year four, right? And that, we're looking at how many of these are career paths. And that was one of the reasons we, I was so excited to have Dale come. So I just, thank you, Dale, for your vision. I, just like I was, thank you for the vision. Because without, without that vision, right, we, we can't go forward. So it is really exciting to me. It feels like, yeah, maybe we won't get them all, right? But what an amazing list of classes to help kids figure out where they're going. Wowza. So thank you.
Well, you're very kind. And I would say, it's a gigantic team of humans that are working really hard. So thank you. And thank you for your investment in the college and career pathways. You know, it's one of our strategic plan goals. And I know, for two years, I was like, come on, what's going on, what's going on? And we've got great people in the right places. And just your support of critical things in terms of the way we staff, our partnerships, the schedule change, I mean, all these things that might not seem like massive things, but they open opportunities for kids. So thank you.
Our next step is to make sure our staff know these pathways. Honestly, we had a pretty good discussion about this even today. Like, okay, if we're going to have all these pathways, do everybody, does everybody know? Like, if you're a whatever, Algebra I teacher and a kid says, I'm really interested in biomedical, like, do you know that's an option? So communication is our next, not challenge, but opportunity. Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Just to clarify, because we, we don't necessarily know the interest and we don't necessarily know the costs, like, these would though be theoretically ready for forecasting this year.
Correct. If, if you approve them, or any that you do approve, we'll put on forecasting so that we can see, on the forecasting sheets, so that we can see which, how many kids we have. Because that's how we build a schedule, right? We figure out what kids need and then what they want on top of that. And also, some of the courses are offered at OCHS, some are offered at Case, some are offered at OXLA. So that'll be part of, we were trying to figure out how to make that very clear also in forecasting. So we had a few students this year who said, I want to take Survey of Agriculture, for example. Oh, I didn't know it was at Case. And so we don't want that to happen to students. Of course, the ones that came are, hopefully, they're the best word of mouth and communication that we have, right? But that's, so they'll be on there, then we'll see how the numbers shake out. And, you know, if we have a Leadership One and we've got two kids that are interested, it's not going to be a go, right? I can't imagine that. But yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, you're off the hook now. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our action items, up first, we have our voting for OSBA. So we'll just move through these. They should go pretty quickly. So A is support for Chrissy Wrights for the OSBA Board of Directors, Clackamas Region, Position Eight.
Chair Wilson, I will move to support Chrissy Wrights for OSBA Board of Directors, Clackamas Region, Position Eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the board?
I'll, I'll just, I know Chrissy personally, and I want to, she got elected, I think, the same year I did. And she has served OSBA for most of that time. So she's very committed. She's also in a rural district, so she brings different perspective than those of us who are in the metro area. So I would just encourage a vote of support.
Awesome. Any further discussion? Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, we have support Heather Ray for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Clackamas Region, Position Seven. Is there a motion?
I'll move to support Heather Ray for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Clackamas Region, Position Seven.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the board?
Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we have support Jenna Beno, I never say her last name correctly.
Tenaloga.
Benaloga for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Clackamas Region, Position Eight.
I'll move to support Gina Benaloga for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Clackamas Region, Position Eight. It's pronounced Gina.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I will just say that we've had really great discussion at the OSBA conferences, and she's really been a great contributor to that. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fantastic. And lastly, we have appoint Chief Financial Officer, Business Manager, Deputy Clerk for the 2025-26 fiscal year, and Dr. Spitzer.
Excellent. So I just, where did he go? Oh, well, I just want to thank Blaise Riggins for his service to our district this fall. He is going to change his role and is off to other adventures. And Elaine Fagan, who has served as our CFO previously, has agreed to fill in for the remainder of the year. She is located in Boise, but she's going to do it remotely and she has family here locally, so when she can arrange to be here, she'll arrange to be here, but we've got it worked out. So it's a great support for our district to have her in that role through the end of the year. She knows us well already. And then we will post for the job for the following year, but she's going to help us through the end of the year. So this is just to formalize the approval for her to fill in in that capacity.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve Elaine Fagan as the Chief Financial Officer for the district.
Second?
Second.
Fantastic. Just any discussion or questions from the board?
We just, just a statement, being on the board for a while, we worked with Elaine, did a fantastic job. She knows school funding and finance and has helped with the other financial officers, and I think we're lucky to get her, so.
And just wish, maybe when he comes back, we can wish him the best.
Sounds great. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director White?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Canciola?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fantastic. We are to board member comments. Director Halpern, do you want to start at the end?
Sure, and I'll go quickly because it's getting late. I will say I am one of the parents who did not fill out the Fall Conference Survey, and I know that you were talking to me directly when you said that. But I thought it was a very, I thought it was a very positive experience. We had a great time meeting with both of our kids' teachers, one of whom is young and new to the district and one of whom has been in the district for a long time. And they both had kind of really insightful things to share, both about our kids and about the district at large, and it was a really positive experience. And I talked to a number of other parents who also really felt that Fall Conferences were good this year and were very glad that we're bringing back Spring Conferences and we're going to be doing it again because it's really the best time to get information about your kids. I'm also really excited to talk about, I'm not talking at length because it's late, but at Holcomb especially, we've started introducing after-school activities. So there is, Oh, Bob is going on, my son is in the movie club where they're watching movies and talking about them for an hour after school. And it really is a great opportunity for kids to be doing extracurriculars and getting started doing those things in school. And also an opportunity for some time for working parents who have trouble getting to school at two, to have another hour and a half where they're able to get there. So that's really been a positive thing. And I want to shout Josh Bryan, who has left many hours ago, but is doing a great job with leading those efforts at Holcomb. And lastly, thank you to David Hobbs. I was fortunate enough to sit in on the Elementary Design Committee meeting and then the Citizen Mon Oversight Committee meeting as well, and I feel like things are moving in the right direction. Very excited to see how they're going. So thank you, David, and thank the rest of you as well. And happy holidays to everyone as we're getting there.
Director Pitts?
Thanks. I think thanks, we know our teams adapt on the fly, and thanks for Hannibal that had to adapt on the fly today as some of our schools didn't have power. My daughter told me a great story about having class in the hallway and her teacher handled it like a champ, and she handled it better than I probably would have. And I think it makes us appreciate the work that Director Hobbs and his team are doing because having schools with walls and windows is something I think we take for granted, and we're really excited when our buildings are going to be adjusted to accommodate that. And then second, I went to Mamma Mia last week, and it's over unfortunately, but if you hadn't seen a production at the high school, they're phenomenal. My kiddo, it was the first play she's ever seen, and it kind of blew her little mind, and she is a future involved in that somehow. I don't know what that'll be, but it was really, really cool and really fun, so I encourage anybody to get out to the next one they're having. I think it's crucible, it might be something else, I can't remember, but yeah, crucible. So thank you.
I'm going to just follow that and say, Mamma Mia was absolutely remarkable. My kids were all in theater all through school, like, starting in like the first grade. And I have to tell you that this is probably the best high school production I have ever seen, and I have seen so many. We did really good ones when my kids were there, but oh my gosh, it really was phenomenal. So congratulations to that team of kids, it was a huge cast. And congratulations to the adults that helped those kids be their best. That's just amazing. And then secondly, I want to remind us all that it's dark and rainy out, and a friend of mine told me recently that they almost ran right through that red line bus and slammed on the brakes and it was okay, and then out comes this little kid in a dark coat, right? And just heart attack. So just a reminder, pay attention, he said he was in a bubble, his own little world, right? Man, watch for those buses and for those babies because it is dark and wet and cold. So please be careful. Happy holidays to all of you and to the rest of our staff, and I and my colleagues. I hope you have a wonderful season.
Okay, wow, where has fall gone? Done. I will tell you, I've been continuing supporting the Grad Parties fundraiser, Bingo. Those are ongoing at different tap houses around Oregon City. Just follow their Facebook page, but it's always a fun night of supporting our seniors that are going to be graduating for a safe party. And then I've always believed in family first. We had to take an unexpected trip down south. My daughter lost her mother-in-law, and I had to help my kids clean out their house. So my son-in-law has lost both of his parents in 10 months. So then I was given the opportunity, and I took the opportunity, I've been selected to attend the CADCA's Annual National Leadership Conference on Drug Prevention through Oregon City together, so I'm going to fly to Baltimore in February and further that training because I got a phone call yesterday, we have lost another graduate of Oregon City. Class of 2015 was found of a fentanyl overdose yesterday, which just keeps re-energizing my passion to get these kids to understand and keep the information out there and be there to support these families that I've tried to get them not to experience what we've had to experience. I'm grateful the sister called me because my name's out there and they know they can call, and they did. And I tried to help the family last night best I could, but it's still very real and it's still very much in our community. So I've had two bad months of bad news, so I'm going to end this on a really positive note because it is the holiday season and things have been really tough on a lot of people. And I wear a lot of hats in this community, but there's one hat I've never got a chance to wear, and I get to be a grandma for the first time.
Oh, yay!
So I'm going to have a little granddaughter in June.
Oh, that's really...
So I'm looking forward to the silver lining and all the dark and the start of a new fresh life. So happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all.
Well, no baby news for my guys. But I did go to conferences, and in solidarity with Alex, I did not fill out the conference sheet, so I'll put that on my to-do list. And attended the book fair for Unified, so we could support that. That was, that was cool, that was going on during conferences at the high school. Got to do the Mamma Mia sing-along on Friday, it was packed in the auditorium and everybody was having a good time. There's so few times we can go and like everybody's just singing and enjoying themselves. This week I'm going to participate in Stock with Care with the social workers from the district to provide some hygiene items and winter gear to some of our families that need that, so just looking forward to that opportunity. And kicked off the holiday season with the tree lighting downtown, which is another really great event to be part of that Doka sponsors.
To keep it short, I did go to Mamma Mia, the sports guy, I actually went to theater, but it was fantastic. We, it was date night with my wife, and to see some of the kids, because we would go to the middle school programs and to see some of the same actors and singers come up was super cool, but also everybody behind the scenes, I kind of noticed all the stuff, like the lighting, like somebody upstairs, the people behind doing the sound, everybody, the parents and volunteers. I think it's another great program in Oregon City, we have great kids throughout all our programs and just, you know, that, those caring connections and belonging things, it's just another one with a huge group of kids. We saw those numbers, 60. I'm sure that, I don't know if their numbers represent the people behind the scenes, but I'd like to see those numbers clarified, too. But it was a good play. I know the builder in me, like, when they're walking up the stairs, not really a handrail, the ocean violations were there, but, I mean, nobody fell, but it was fantastic. My wife enjoyed it, and as always, the kids do a great job. And Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year, but I think we'll see each other on the 15th for like a work session, so maybe not everybody will be there.
Okay, so shout out to Mamma Mia also and the parent-teacher conferences.
Did we all go? Or no?
Almost all of us.
Oh, yes, you did this morning.
It was fantastic. And also, parent-teacher conferences were really awesome, and it was great to see all the support from staff at them and all the families attending. And kind of on what you were talking about, Heidi, there's just a lot of opportunities for us to give back to our neighbors right now, and so I just want to encourage folks, if you're able, to find time to either donate time or resources, there's a lot of folks in need, and this is a great time just to remember our sense of community and to reach out to somebody who needs help. So there's lots of organizations, I know you can reach out to your school. Most of our schools are running some sort of support program or charity program right now with the holidays, and if you aren't sure how to do that, we can reach out to the district for support, so. And that's all I have.